I don't know, these good things make me sweat more than the bad things.
Well, it's got so many people coming.
It's so important, I wanna screw it up.
I know, I felt the other night.
Yeah.
Yesterday, well, with the veterans lunch, that went really well.
I heard that was amazing.
Yeah.
It was, and there was some amazing food there.
Yeah.
Looking forward to doing it again.
Good.
Yeah, looking forward to doing it again, and all the veterans have the same thing to say, they want more events in town, you know?
I love that, we should.
Yeah, so we're gonna work on that, me and Sean, talked about it a lot yesterday.
Good, awesome.
But I know, but the veterans are important, and it seems like they get forgotten in this area a lot, so I'm gonna work on that.
I love that.
Alright, everyone, seeing it's five o'clock, call the meeting ordered, please rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone, for coming in this evening, I know that what most of y'all are in here for at the beginning of the meeting, feel free to stay for the rest of it.
I got that thing.
Yeah, it's been, you know, a great month, you know, being able to express our gratitude, you know, to some of the, you know, fine people in our community, and this evening, you know, is a continuation of that. You know, so we're gonna start our meeting out with showing our appreciation for two fine emergency services personnel in our community that really went above and beyond. So, you know, we're gathered here this evening to commend Fire Chief Ben Hatcher and Officer Vincent Estrella Reyes for their heroic and selfless life-saving actions on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Their quick thinking and unwavering dedication to their duty saved a life and averted what could have been much more tragic situation. The New Ipswich Fire Department, New Ipswich Police Department, and South Heagan Valley Ambulance were simultaneously dispatched to a forty-seven-year-old unconscious male. Our chief Ben Hatcher was the first on scene within a minute of the dispatch and quickly recognized that the patient had no pulse and was not breathing. Chief Hatcher moved the patient to a safe location and began CPR. Officer Reyes arrived on scene within three minutes of being summoned to the residence and placed an AED on the patient, administering a shock that restarted the patient's heart. South Heagan Valley Ambulance and New Ipswich Fire personnel arrived on the scene at a patient who was unconscious but breathing and with a pulse. SVAS personnel, with the assistance of Peterborough Paramedic, intercepted continued life-saving efforts during the transport to Catholic Medical Center. The patient has been released from the hospital and is home recovering. Catholic Medical Center has stated that the quick recognition of the need for chest compressions and defibrillation was instrumental in saving this patient's life. All first responder teams working together were instrumental in the positive outcome of this situation. Both Chief Hatcher and Officer Reyes acted with remarkable courage. Their ability to remain calm under immense pressure, assess the situation, and take swift and decisive action was nothing short of extraordinary. The teamwork and professionalism they demonstrated are a testament to their leadership and commitment to the town of New Ipswich. Their actions not only reflect the highest standards of the Fire Department and Police Department, but they also serve as an inspiring example of the courage and sacrifice exhibited by first responders every single day. It's with great honor that I get to express our deepest gratitude and heartfelt admiration to Chief Hatcher and Officer Reyes for their heroic efforts on behalf of the BOS and our entire community. Thank you. I know you chose a seat in the back, but now you get to come up. Letter of commendation, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pictures?
Yeah, chief?
And I'll be really quick, for those that don't know me or maybe watching from TV, it's Mike Abel, Chief of Police here in New Ipswich. Again, I'd like to just thank everybody for being here, the town for taking the time to recognize a good effort put forth by our first responders. Another thing, let's not forget that every day, whether it's the Highway Department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, SFS, this stuff happens every day. We work very hard, we serve the community, and today we make special recognition, but truly, these people work like this every day.
If I could add to that, I have experienced the SVAS at need of their services on several occasions, and I want to attest to that. When they come, it is a good thing.
They're great, great resources.
Yeah, and we're fortunate to work side by side with SFS, they save lives all the time, they really do, they need solid recognition for that. But as far as the PD goes, I'm proud of my officer, he did a good job. We, as police, we're not just, you know, upholding the law, we serve the community in many different ways, whether it's dysfunction, you know, supporting SFS in an emergency. A lot of times we can be first on scene because we're, you know, full-time, ready to roll, especially after hours. So, you know, that's a fortunate thing for us to be there. You did a great job, I appreciate everybody for making the recognition. And the Police Department with help from SFS, we put together a pre-hospital cardiac arrest aid combination for Officer Reyes, and I'd like to issue that. From your medical, you know, saying we can serve the community in so many other ways, right? Just helping somebody stranded on the side of the road, to somebody that needs directions, to a broken-down car, to, you know, just community policing all around, so we do a lot more than just uphold the law. Also Sergeant Valheim of the New Ipswich Police Department took the time to write a letter of recognition from the PD to Ben Hatcher and to Officer Reyes and Chief Hatcher, and I'll just present those. It very much mimics what Mr. Talbot had to say about you two and your performance that day and everybody else that helped out, so. Officer, I mean Sergeant Valheim, you know, recognized that effort and wanted to make sure you guys got a letter, so thank you, and thank you Sergeant.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
You guys throw Ashley one up.
Before we get into picture mode, I just wanna take this moment to really express how, not even lucky, but just fortunate that we are, that we have so many community members that are involved in our emergency services every day, and the team's growing stronger. And just the work that they put in is tireless, it's really, really tireless work and effort, so it's over the last, maybe eight years, I think it kinda started when I was on the Board of Directors for SVAS. You know, kinda trying to understand what it meant to be emergency services and, you know, seeing some of the little cracks and divisions here and there, but it just how everything's really gelling right now, and the whole team is really functioning really well together. It's a really beautiful thing to see, so, you know, thank you very much, you know, Wendy, Ben, Mike, for leading your teams and showing them what it is, like, to do, like, the commitment that it takes. Because I know, you know, all three of you, it starts at the top, and your commitment and dedication speaks volumes, so thank you. That's all I had for that, this section. Yeah, you gotta take a couple pictures and then get you back out on the road.
You got that thing.
You guys wanna go, like, in the center there? It's up to you. Surprised you even agreed to it?
Thank you for agreeing to it as well.
I'm sorry.
Photo bombing.
Yeah, then we're gonna make it work.
I wanna get real close.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, man, I appreciate it. Yeah, absolutely.
The next item on our agenda is to speak about some Police Department business, Chief Abel.
Yeah, bye.
And they even have to take a tone.
Way to clear the room, Sean.
I know, talk about police issues. It's better than that buzzer going off, it seems like whenever I'm, like, near those guys, it's just all of a sudden their buzzers start going off. I got to the, I had to work yesterday, so I tried to make it into the lunch, but everybody had already cleared out, I think by nine in three thirty yet. I was like, hey, you guys, like, you guys clean ups real quick, they said, you gotta call. Then even Sunday evening, Ben hosted a gathering for his Fire Department personnel and their families, and they just had a chance to kinda get together, and he gave out a few awards for people that have gone above and beyond in the last year in the Fire Department.
That was nice.
Yeah, I didn't quite know what to expect, so hopefully they start making that an annual thing too. But right after the awards happened, boom, like, all the bells started going off, and not just one, I think it happened three times, so then it just, yeah, had to go to three different spots. But even when they're trying to take a break, the last time that they tried to take a break together, a couple few weeks ago, that's, we had the wildfire down on Pratt Pond Road. Yeah, yeah, so, brush fire, not wildfire, I guess. Alright, with that, chief?
Yeah, all right, what do we have on agenda first, was there any specific order?
Whatever you want.
We got hiring cruiser budget.
Hiring.
Can we start with, might as well hit up the cruiser request, this is kind of circling back, does anybody need a copy of the quote that I sent?
I printed him for everyone.
Oh, okay, I did too. So I just wanted to circle back to that, I know we spoke earlier in the year on the cruiser. I ended up working with MHQ, which we've done business with in the past, and there was some attempt to do some work with another company, which is another client proposal here. Which is actually six thousand dollars more than the MHQ quote, but MHQ was much more responsive and actually got me a much more detailed quote than the other company. So there was a lot of unknowns with the sixty-six thousand, three-ten versus the sixty thousand. So I'm asking the board to accept the quote from MHQ, and I can sign that quote, get it back to them, and start securing a future, the cruiser for the future here. Still looking at three to six months probably to get delivery of that cruiser. So, like to move forward on that. And I can leave you with the other company's client proposal, they call it, if you want me to.
Yeah, that would be good, like they have as a part.
Sure, thank you.
I can certainly appreciate, you know, having a preferred vendor, and thank you, you know, for reaching out, like, to the other vendor anyways, and, yeah. But I know that it's important to have good working relationships as well. And, you know, some companies are more responsive on different things, or you don't run into different types of issues, so.
Well, that's what I ran into, was this very delayed responses and nothing with the details looking for. And so it just came, you know, MHQ become evident that that's who we should go with, and plus it was six thousand dollars less. And we bought probably the last five or six cruisers from MHQ, they'd been our outfitter for years. That other cruiser we spoke about, the twenty-twenty that we've had a lot of problems with, essentially is still a problem child, and it's basically sits in the lot, and we use it only when we have to.
Yeah.
So it puts us down to, you know, kind of a tough spot with that cruiser.
That's odd how that can go, and just, you know, something has problems.
Got a lemon.
Yeah, we went to try to use it yesterday and wouldn't even start because the battery was dead, you know what I mean, so. It's just, seems like now there's something drawing on the battery because the battery was replaced this year, so we pulled the computer out of it, all that stuff, and it's still, still dead. But that's also the same one that's been flooded twice, or three, four times.
From an unknown area.
Yeah, well, they can't, they can't figure it out, so.
It's just crazy.
And we've had three thousand-plus dollars in diagnosis, diagnosis in that vehicle for the leak, and we still can't figure it out.
And your capital reserve is well, ready to absorb this.
Yeah, I believe there's a hundred and sixty thousand plus in the capital reserve, something like that.
Good.
Maybe, yeah, it's definitely up there. And, yeah, I just think the cost is gonna continue to go up, so. It's, we need it, it's time to make them up.
Did you have any questions for chief, or?
Uh, no, not at all.
Jason.
I reviewed through this earlier.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept and approve the proposal for the twenty-twenty-five police interceptor utility vehicle for a total of up to sixty-one thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That was easy.
And on the hiring front, we've continued to have, you know, not just New Ipswich, but probably many agencies have had a very hard time recruiting, I think we've hired one officer, and as far as the part full-time status goes, and we're looking at like a year and a half. We were fortunate enough to retain Mark Frederick when he went to AMRS, and I was able to convince Tyler Swenson to come back part-time after going to AMRS for about a year, just to help us out while we tried to fill the full-time positions. But their availability is limited because of their full-time commitment, plus, so we're still trying to hire. It's, right now I have absolutely nobody in the pipeline. I had a couple of candidates last month that just didn't make it through the process or left the process for various reasons. So, we're coming up on the January deadline for the Police Academy, and we're not gonna make that deadline. That puts us into the May Academy, which gets somebody graduating the Academy next September. End of August, so we're still looking at, if I hired somebody today, ten months before they're even able to come back to New Ipswich, so. It just takes a real long time to actually go through the hiring process if they're brand new. So if you have somebody with no police experience and needs to go to the Academy, you're looking at ten to twelve months before they're on the road at best, you know, as a solo officer, so. We're still working with that, we're trying to hire, most of our leads come through indeed, I know you guys see that resource that we use. Other than that, I've tried other hiring platforms, and it's just, there was like no response, so. That's where we are with that.
So what's the, your current staff?
So we have four full-time employees right now, officers, sworn officers, Officer Ben Davy, which was here tonight, is still in field training, so he did, we hired him in May, he went to the Academy, graduated October fourth, and right now he's at our field training program, trying to get him to the solo status. So until we're comfortable releasing him on his own, which may be, I'm hopeful maybe by the end of the year, you know? And then that would put him in a solo status in January. So that still leaves us down, you know, two full-time positions, so myself, the Sergeant Reyes, and Ben Davy, you know, so that's what we're currently doing, and we've been running three full-timers since March, when we really should have six. So we're trying, we're trying to hire, and as far as full-time certified applicants, we're not getting any applicants that are already police officers that are applying to our agency. I got a couple probably in twenty-twenty-three, but they were released or let go from their prior agency, and I just didn't feel like they were good candidates for us. For various reasons. So that's where we're at with that. I do have something that might be better off in a non-public, when we go into non-public for some other comments. But, yeah, that's it, that's it I have on that, and if we have time, I have another proposal for a piece of equipment, but.
You're on a run, go for it.
Alright. And I know in twenty-twenty-two, we put some new computers into the, two of our cruisers out of the four. So I'm trying to still improve our technology as an agency, because we're still very far behind in our technology. The current administrative car, chief's car, has no computer system in it, and I figured this year I would try to put a computer system in that cruiser, seeing how that would be the command card in incident, and right now it has no computer capabilities. So I got a quote from Patrol PC, the same company that put in our last two mounts and computers, net interfaces with our wireless photoms, which then interface with FirstNet, so we have technology back to the PD, if you will. So I got a quote from Patrol PC to have my cruiser, or cruiser for the New Ipswich Police Department outfitted with a new mount and installation, and quote for the tablet, organized tablet, and it's six thousand twenty-six dollars. So I got four of them here, I'll pass them around, and the reason I come to you today is we have a significant surplus in the PD budget, and I would like to use a little bit of that to try to get this car outfitted with a computer. So currently, only fifty percent of our cruisers have computers, and this would give us a three-front line computer, cruisers with computers.
This is what you were talking about earlier, about the new officers wanting tablets.
Yeah, yeah, and quite frankly, if I dove right into this, our technology is very far behind. I can give you a ten-minute speech on what we can't do and what we should be doing on the road.
Go for it.
Yeah, we're doing everything by hand, so for instance, if I, let's say I'll go with a simple one, I have a traffic stop, and I make a traffic stop, and if I wanted to pull what we call a call for service for that traffic stop, I'm doing this at the PD, I'm not even doing it on a computer in the car, because our technology is antiquated, right? So if I wanna run a plate, if I wanna run a license number, or somebody's driver's license, I'm doing that all over the air to the dispatch. Still, when I'm roadside, I'm writing down the person's name, address, date of birth, phone number, I'm writing down their license number, the plate number of the vehicle, and the make, the model, goes on and on, all the citation, where all this stuff could be done in real time while I'm sitting on the stop. And if I go to a car accident involving four cars, all that information can be backfilled into that call live while I'm on the call, where now I gotta write everything down, bring it back to PD and data enter it myself.
Oh, by dispatch, so dispatch, like.
Yeah, they send you a printed copy over, you're faxed, right? And so, most agencies, especially ones that, you know, that I know of and I've worked for, this is a much more automated process, right? And so for me trying to put computers in the car, and like, I had Greg come out a couple months ago, and I had him establish a VPN for us back to our PD, so we could at least simulate some of the work from the car, but without these computers, we can't do any of it. And they can, a lot of resources, they, you know, whether they're using an online resource to look something up, we're looking for directions, we can pull up maps, you know, anything you can imagine that is an online resource, there's also these computers. We also put into them the digitized version of our criminal code, the digitalized version of our motor vehicle code, so you could do, look up a lot of resources by just saving it to the computer. One of the things I find very helpful is just maps alone is very helpful. Navigating, or if somebody runs on us and we do a, you know, a foot pursuit into the woods, or we have to get duck canine, we can bring up maps on the computers, and then we can establish and directions and that kind of stuff, but that's just part of it. So as far as like, the, only two of the cruisers have the computer, I'd like to add a third one in, you know, into our rotation.
Question, does the new, the new vehicle come already with a computer?
No, we're gonna take the computer out of the one that we're gonna get rid of.
Okay.
So that unit will just transfer to the new computer.
How old is that computer?
Twenty-twenty-two, so it's two years old.
Two years old.
Yeah.
So I can understand buying this Rhino Tab, does that allow you to do all of this out there on the scene, or do you still have to come back?
Some of it I'll still have to come back, but it'll allow me to, right now I have no resources, no computer in the car, so it'll at least allow me to connect that VPN, and I will be able to pull call for services from the car, and then type my narratives and such. It will not allow me to what I call backfill, so taking the DMV response, so if I type in a plate number, hit enter, through spots, I get a response from the DMV on my computer. With, over the VPN, it won't allow me to take that DMV response and automatically backfill it into my call for service. My software that we use, our wreckage management software we use right now, doesn't allow that, that's what I mean, but it's antiquated.
So what's the software you need?
Well, we need to move away from, migrate away from CrimeStar, which was a very old technology, and I would really, I think I presented it to the board two years ago, was to move to something like IMC, which is used for many agencies throughout New England, which is a much more robust wreckage management platform to allow these types of data transfers live out in the field. It's, the user interface is much more friendly. CrimeStar is, it works at its basic level, but as far as having what I call good technology, it's not.
And I think we already have a capital improvement project outlined from this that pre-DHT gave, because we knew it was.
It's been a long time, yeah, and it was my number one on the, our performance, you know, when we put the list together, and, you know, obviously, I appreciate everything we got anyway, but that was my number one on the top, was to try to migrate to a new wreckage management software. But that was my number one on the top, was to try to migrate to a new wreckage management software, um.
How much is that?
It, back then it was, so was that twenty-three we got the upper money or twenty?
Ten, twelve thousand?
No, it was a lot more than that.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
I wanna say like fifty, sixty.
Well, now it's eighty.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's eighty thousand dollars, the code I got for the upper funds, so whenever I.
And that was two years ago.
That was two years ago. Yeah, and I think we went to, we tried to go to IM, well, New York Switch Police Department tried to go IMC many years ago for about twenty grand, and this is what's happened over the years. Uh, and, and I've worked in IMC for many years and still do over at another agency, and it's, it's very much a night and day difference record management system, you know? Uh, you know, I, I don't wanna say anything too negative, but it's, it's uh, CrimeStar is uh, needs to be updated and it's not, right? You know?
So CrimeStar is the old one?
CrimeStar is what we use now for our wreckage management and sure, it works, at its basic level, sure. And I, you know, and sometimes simplicity is good, but um.
But it causes more, more work on the other end.
Yeah, I'm sure, it, it does cause it, so I mean, when, when, especially when we're short-staffed, minutes count.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And, and if I can save a minute here, five minutes there. In twenty twenty-four, going into twenty twenty-five, should I be migrating my own data, or should I use the technology? And I don't have to type the eighteen-digit VIN number for every car involved in the accident. And then double-checking and then, you know what I mean, all that stuff can be backfilled. For another example, let's say I go out to a call where I'm going for a noise disturbance. And I encounter four or five people in the park. And I run them, right? So run them means I say, hey, I'm gonna run this sorry, can you do a record check on her, make sure she's not wanted, or make sure, whatever. Right? Oh, are you the driver? Yeah, I wanna drive her, make sure she's got a valid driver's license. The dispatch in the, in the, in the live system runs Ashley, puts her right in the call for me. I never had me have to do it. Then I go to D, then I go to the next one, go to the next one, all that information by the dispatch is getting dumped right into my call. And then when I'm done, I'm typing my narrative, made contact with these people, explained them the noise plate I had. Asked if they would cooperate, turned on the radio, or leave the area. Oh, we're sorry, we'll leave the area, we have another place to go. Type my narrative, save, I'm done. I'll go back with five pieces of paper with all their information. Sit down at my desk, backfill all that stuff in my hand, when dispatch can do it right from the record. So um.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions.
Seems crazy.
Since CrimeStar was your old one, what's the new one called?
Um, it's called IMC, but it's uh, the official is uh, Tri-Tech.
Tri-Tech?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's the one that costs eighty thousand?
It was a couple of years ago, yeah, and that was with a complete data migration. So the data migration said we could take our CrimeStar data, which is what I'll now call legacy data. And it'll take it and say, you know what, don't you want all that data in the new system? Well, yeah, because if I have open cases, I need the data in my car, so now I'm not running two systems.
Right.
So the data migration was probably twenty-five percent of that cost. And it didn't make any sense to me to make a new system and then still run the legacy system in the background. And still pay licensing for it, when I could take my data and say, no, let's get it all transferred into this language, computer language. And then I'd have my data. And you could look back if you wanted to save some money and say, hey, I, I don't wanna do twenty years' worth of data. Cause chances are, the la- the, the latest twenty years, I'm never gonna need that data again, but let's do five or ten years of data, cause I might have open cases. And people might be, what do you mean open cases? I might be prosecuting cases, like right now, we're still working on that case in twenty fifteen. It's still active, felony case, uh, bad one, but it's still in the system.
Wow.
And there's various reasons. One could be the defendant can't be found, and all of a sudden they surface and we get arrested off a felony case that was pending for years. Um, we have some older cases, but anyways, that's, that was, part of that was to bring that data from CrimeStar into whatever our new wreckage management system would be. Um, but again, I, I've always kind of staged, I want, I've been trying to stage the computers to have, the cruisers to have computers. So as we get new technology or better technology, or ever migrate to a better wreckage management system, we at least have the backbone in place. If I don't have computers in the cruisers that I still use every day, and then come to you and say, I need eighty thousand dollars for the CrimeStar, and then I also need sixty thousand dollars for computers. That seems like a bigger apple to try to, um, to, to, to take, right? So, um, trying to get these computers into these cars is all part of my vision of like, hey, let's increase our technology, even if we have to do it slowly. And.
Okay, so I'm trying to build a picture in my mind of everything that you need. So you've got, so we're talking about um, Tri-Tech or IMC, um, and we got the, the old price. Now, how much? I take it that one price is, is for the base unit?
This call here?
No, I'm talking about uh, the eighty thousand that you're talking about for the Tri-Tech or the IMC.
Yeah, that was an old call from twenty twenty-two, but that was like to get up and running with IMC and the data migration.
Okay.
That was, that was their quote.
That's fine.
So that was the system plus the support to implement it?
Correct.
Yeah, uh, each, so each um, each um car needs to have a computer also, right?
Yeah, if you're gonna run that's, we have them now, our two out of three, but I mean, yes, you need a computer. That's one of the major reasons to do it is so our, we're gonna be more efficient out on the road.
Okay, and um, we, you mentioned tablets for, for the officers.
It was just the ruggedized tablets in the cruisers, that's it.
Oh.
That's this right here?
Yeah, correct.
And you already have two of them?
Two, yeah. We only need three at this moment. The fourth car is like our spare, which is unfortunately, we, we just, we just never had a computer in that car. It's just a spare car. It's not a frontline car. Uh, we have three frontline cars and right now only two have computers, so like I said, I'm just trying to get the backbone built if we ever have a better system. We're accustomed to having this equipment and, and we need it, to be frank.
And so how many tablets would you need?
Uh, altogether, we just need three and we have two right now.
Okay, so you just need one more?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Which is that quote?
Yeah, and the whole wreckage management system is probably another conversation, but we still need the computers, we still use them, we still run a VPN now, which we just got set up. Like I said, I'm always looking for a way to try to increase what we have. Didn't cost us anything to implement a VPN, and I worked with Greg and we got it up and running. So now when they log in through the VPN, it looks just like their desktop in the station. So it's a, at least it's a step in the right direction. It's not a fix, a hundred percent, but it's better. And we were able to implement it. We, we saved our old server, we replaced two years ago. Stripped it down, put the VPN on that, and then run that as our VPN server, and right now it's not costing us anything.
So that quote includes the tablet?
This quote?
Yeah, that's just the tablet and the mount for the cruiser, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's our Rhino.
That's the third one?
Yeah.
And I'm behind putting data in, but I'll start a new card for the, the Tri-Tech.
Yeah.
And we'll see if we can at least get some numbers in there, so you guys can talk about where to go with that.
Yeah, like I said, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but I think about, it's a good conversation to start moving towards being more efficient. The real goal is, is how do we keep our officers patrolling versus always in the PD? Our primary function as police officers is to be on the road. Right? That's where we need to be. And right now, with being short-staffed and not having good technology. To be frank, we spend, we spend more time in the PD than we do on the road. Between investigations and officers working multiple cases at a time and not having good technology, right? Things that would speed up our day-to-day operations. You know, if I'm on a car stop and I run a car stop and I write a warning, I should be able to do all that in the computer, and when I hit save and close, I never see it again. Not bring a piece of paper back that I had to write everything on, go back to the PD, open up the computer, start the software, open up a call for service and hand-enter all that stuff.
Yeah, I'm not.
That's ten minutes, just for a car stop. Never mind the car stop.
Yeah.
Right? Or if I'm on the road, it's backfilled, goes in, type in stop for speeding, warning given, enter, save, done, never see that call again. I don't have to touch a piece of paper. Right? Cause the, the information gets backdated, backfilled right from the DMV response.
So, I know this is gonna be an impossible question to answer, but how many man-hours of backfilling would you estimate? Say in a month?
Yeah, I don't know, so, I mean, there's all times, e- every case is being handwritten down, so anytime I have contact with anybody in the community, I have to handwriting it down. Versus maybe going over the air and saying, hey, can you run Jason Somerall? Date of birth, X, yeah, yeah, he's in the system, he's good to go, no warrants, uh, can you put him back in the call for me? Back, I would always say just backfill him in the call. Yep, done. I look at the call and listen, Jason's there. Name, date of birth, address, phone number, whatever's in the rec- in the record, boom, done. Uh, so, so to answer your question is I don't, I don't know the answer. It is impossible, but it's a lot of hours.
It almost sounds like it's one or more officers probably worth of time, like, like throughout the year, like worth of time.
It's hours, hours worth of time. I mean, for every, just like I said, the simple one to reflect on is the car stop. For every single car stop, it's the time of the stop and then going back and all that data entry, um. We'll say real quick, two and a half minutes, s- slow, five minutes per car stop on top of that. Times two thousand car stops a year. And that's just one contact type, right? Not all the other. Today I had an unwanted, unwanted person on, on town. I gotta go over there, make contact with them, like identify them, like call in, do a record check. Run the car, make sure the car's not stolen, all that good stuff. I have to write all that stuff down by hand, I go back to the PD. Now I gotta write my calls, there's, and backfill all this stuff by hand versus let dispatch do it. That's where your time saving comes from.
And we pay them as well.
We pay them as well, right? And um, so that's the reality of it and I've worked in that environment for twenty years, so to be here, it's like, we really need to do something with our technology, I mean.
But it does sound.
In two thousand five, I was using this technology that we're already using, that I'm trying to tell you that we need.
What I'm hearing is it's a substantial amount of man-hours, like I don't know if it would approach a year's worth of work for an officer, but.
Yeah, I don't think it's two, yeah, I don't think it's two thousand hours by a wage stretch.
It's pretty substantial.
Of all the officers that are out, if they're out patrolling and like all of their time. And the reason that I'm trying to get there is kinda, we've moved away from leveraging un-executed budget money, you know, like and then so that we can return that back to the taxpayers.
Right, right.
You know, when we, uh, at that time, uh, like we did uh, last week to offset the tax rate. But in this instance, it almost makes sense where you could equate that to an officer. And if you're having trouble recruiting, I know you had mentioned before that part of it, a big part of it was the technology part, it might have been a big reason for um, partially, you know, losing the past two officers.
Yeah.
Um, so, kinda where my head's at is that I know that you do have some money, you know, left this year. Um, I don't know if the, the rest of the board would entertain um, utilizing some of those funds in order to get this implemented sooner rather than later. Um, so we can, you know, help the department keep going, since it sounds like we're a year plus out from even getting another officer.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, as I said, everything I do every single day is how do I keep my officers? Everything I do, right? Yeah, I wanna serve the community the best I can, but they're always in my mind, like I don't, like, we can't lose anybody else, right? It's so hard to recruit, and so if I can give them better technology, if I can, you know, just whatever they ask for, if they have a special training they want them to do, I'm trying to do what I can to retain our officers. Uh, I'm, I'm, I come up with any creative idea that I can. And you know, the, the few people that we do have have told me, like, we appreciate you being flexible, we appreciate you working with us and being like, you know, someone easy to work with. You know, and, and doesn't mean um, pushover, it just means I listen to them and that, you know, if they have a concern, we work with it. And, you know, so I'm just trying to find a way every, every, every day to keep our police, that's what I'm doing. Right? Um, and technology is a big one, and you know, in the perfect world, I would have brought Officer Frederick today. Who could have come over and said, the light bulb I got turned on when he went somewhere else with their technology. But I'm not here to bash anybody, I'm just here to, you know, point out the facts that we really lack in technology and everything I do is just a little step forward.
Well, it's, that's more a piece of that aspect of always being like a training community.
Yeah.
So then, you know, you'll recruit and find, you know, spend a lot of time um, vetting new officers, like even uh, young officers to get them going into the academy and through the academy, like all the time on the road, get them out on the road and then you know, something comes up or one of their friends from another department, you know, they're chatting and you know, that sounds like it, it'd be a huge draw um, to me, like not to have that technology, it's just one more piece. Cause then you're also distracted out on calls. Um, you know, writing things down versus, yeah.
Like I said, there's no perfect wreckage management system, but there certainly are pickled ones, you know? And quite frankly, for me to even try to migrate to a new system, it's a lot of work, right? Be a lot easier for me to sit in the background and just take what we have.
You don't have to tell us, we have a new accounting system that's being migrated.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, for me, it's a, it's a total heartbreak, right? Like, I'm gonna have so much work to do. And if there's a glitch, it's up to me and the, the software company to fix it, not my officers, right? I'm gonna have to figure it out. And uh, yeah, I, I, I envision it being really hard if we ever do it, right? That's gonna be a tough migration. And then you gotta stand it up, and once you stand it up, you gotta test it, right? And then when you have that test phase, and in the end you flip the switches and hope everything goes.
So you're saying you don't want it?
No, I do, but it's, it's, like I said, it'd be easier for me to say, oh, I don't want anything, but um. My real ask today was that, I would consider anything that you have, but.
Well, what I see is, you know, I'd advise a list out of, of what it's going to be. And if at all possible, we equate that to um, the equivalence of what an officer would cost.
Yeah.
I don't think we need. I don't think we need that, I, I don't need it for myself, yeah.
It, it just has to be roundabout numbers.
Cause sometimes we, you know, we put these guys through their paces, like on that work end of it, and then adjust. Not sure, you know, for myself, I'm kinda just wondering what a current quote would be. Uh, what the projected un-executed budget is, and then whether or not uh, you gentlemen would entertain having that conversation in the next couple of weeks of um, leveraging those funds or not.
Yeah, well, we did that with the renovations up there.
Hmm.
That's how that was accomplished. Now, I remember we had a public hearing to say, just to notify people. There's gonna be a huge change in what you see in the um, budget. I mean, maybe not change, but anomaly. And this is why it's gonna be there.
Yeah.
And I believe that was brought into question recently and because we handled it that way, there was no, no issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was amazing, that, that renovation alone is no doubt saved the officers we have. No doubt, they all like, we have everything we need now, right?
And you have a new sign now, too.
Right, we even got a new sign, yeah. But it, it was, it was absolutely necessary and it, it is way different. We feel safer, we have a much smoother workflow within the four walls of our office, and our officers are happy, it's safer. We have, you know, emergency exits now, you know, I mean, before we didn't have an emergency exit. Um, it, it's been, thank you, it's been great, right? It, it really made a big difference in morale, too.
But for me, a big, a big part of this is, is just, it seems to me there's huge long-term savings.
Yeah.
I mean, this would, it would go for years.
Yeah.
That you would be benefiting from. Even if it is only two and a half minutes per call or stop or whatever, however you use it.
An extra simple one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But even that is still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, stopping, right, starting and all of that.
Yeah, and like I said, if we can find ways to keep officers on the road, that's really what it's about. And then when you're, when you're short-staffed, like I said, the two and a half minutes might not count as much if you got everybody available, right? But when you're short-staffed and everybody's working extra hard and everybody's taking on extra cases, yeah, to me, two and a half minutes makes a difference.
Hmm.
Right? And it doesn't sound like much, but I think anybody here who's ever been under the pressure of, you know, constant performance. You know, two and a half minutes, like I can grab something else and get done, but anyway, I'm not gonna beat it up, but um.
Yeah, well, there's nothing worse.
And I've come from both sides.
There's nothing worse tha- than technology that doesn't work together, especially when you experience it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And another department where it's working together, like you, there's that component that makes it all talk to each other, um.
You know, and that's, you know, then we get, it's all here, working with our dispatch center, you know, yeah, but anyway.
So would you be willing to do that, look into what it is?
Yeah, I can get hold of them, I mean, they are, a company would, would um, probably throw a, a quote together for us pretty quick.
And would you be willing to go through?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, I would, I would. I mean, I would, it'd be easier if I was fully staffed, so I wasn't, you know, handling all these calls myself and and investigations, but uh, the answer's yes, right? Cause it needs to be done, right? The, the, it's worth the effort, so, well, then we have to improve our technology, whether it's this year, next year, the year after. Even if it's a step-by-step process, we have to, right?
Yeah.
And we need to, yeah, just give our officers the tools they need to stay out on the road and work, right? And that's what it's about, and like I said, I've come from that side and I still work part-time there. And every time I pull a shift in, I'm like, yes, this. And every time I pull a shift in, I'm like, yes, this is what I know, right? Like, it's really fast, it's efficient, um, and, uh, yeah. And if anybody, anybody who ever wants to have a demo, I still work for that agency. If I'm on a shift, you're more than welcome to come and do a ride-along, and I'll show you the differences in technology. You would be like, wow. So it'd be, that's an open invite, right? Come for a ride-along, um, to the community, right? I can get it approved by the chief over there. I can take you on a ride-along here and show you what we do here. I can take you for a ride-along over there, and you, it'll be eye-opening, right? The technology.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's an open invite, so, um.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, so if you could, you know, just get that quote together from them and get that information over to us, and we'll look at the schedule, the appropriate meeting,
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, yeah.
To get it addressed for the community. Yep.
Yeah, so that's it. And then, like I said, whatever you wanna do with this, I mean, it's still a vital piece, but I don't know, I don't know what to go about it, but.
Now, I see on the bottom, you have a note that there's a twenty-five hundred dollar balance.
That's what's in our hardware line right now.
Okay. So then you'd only be looking for an additional thirty-five hundred or so?
Yeah, four grand, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, like I said, it's, uh, there's a big surplus this year cause of staffing, but, um, so again, I just try to leverage those, uh, opportunities to do what we can when we have the resources, so.
Mm-hmm. What are your thoughts about this this evening? Like to address this component?
You wanna, uh, go for the approval now?
For this?
Yes, yeah, cause he's gonna dip into it, um, you know, funds from another line, um.
Yeah.
Yep. To cover the balance.
I don't have any issues with that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the Rhino doc and, um, tablet installation. Um, the total of six thousand, up to six thousand thirty dollars. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Bye.
Cool. Thanks, Adam.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate that. You're welcome.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think I have a couple of things for non-public, and then, uh, other than that, it would be, um, over here with the PD operating budget, so I don't know how you wanna, if you wanna go right into the budget now and then come back to a non-public or whatever it is easiest.
Yeah, it's the non-public. Is that what you had listed here? Was for?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Yeah, so probably, you know, stay right on this and we'll get into the budget. Um, I don't know, Joe, if you wanna help out.
You're up.
So budget?
Loop, yeah, yeah, go budget, yeah.
We could always go in and out this.
Yep.
So I think it'll make it over here. I'm really not sure.
Do you wanna switch? I don't need any wires.
Uh, I think we'll make it.
Okay.
It's gonna take a few months to set it up, though.
Bruce, can you grab that, uh, the TV controller? And then, um, I'm just gonna go talk to Ron quick while they're setting up.
Mm-hmm. Do you think five minutes, Joe?
Can it, can it get running?
Yeah.
We're lucky.
Might be longer.
Well, it depends if it works the first time or not.
Okay. BRB.
BRB. I reckon I will.
Yeah.
Thanks for the break, Joe. All right, anytime.
Good, how are you?
I did, or what's that?
Have you met Steve?
Oh, of course.
Okay, all right. Just, wanna make sure, wanna make sure, oh, that's right.
When he has, he has birthdays in the same month, so he gets a good.
Oh, man.
I'll be tired from sugar until next year.
Hmm, so hard, right?
I went on a cruise and liked diet with like eighty percent treats and snacks.
Yeah.
That's a cruise. Put myself in the shirt.
No, I have a sweet tooth, too.
Back to eat clean and throw a shot at outside hours.
Okay, are you guys, uh, is your, the rest of your staff pretty stable?
Yeah. Well, we have the, uh, four full timers.
Is Officer Lowell with Mike?
Weston.
Weston, okay. He, I met him before and he left when he got there, right?
Yeah, for a few days, yeah, it was very short.
Oh, it was just a few days, okay.
Yeah, he was like, oh, that's in two weeks.
Okay, cause I like, I like the whole team, yeah. Me, uh, I don't meet them. Hopefully I won't meet them too much.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's myself, uh, Travis, Justin, Paul, and, uh, Brady's with you tonight, Officer Brady is.
Think I met him at Trumpertree, or somewhere, or, or, or no, he came for a dunk, yeah, a dunk.
At, uh, Odd Fest. Yeah, the dunk.
The dunk pick, that's what it's called.
And then, uh, Jackie, who can't do it, she's a full-time accountant, she's doing really well. She's been a great support.
She's been there a couple of years now, right?
Just a year, December. But she's picked up real fast, so really good job, so I'm very, very impressed.
I'll be on the, I'll be on the computer, I'll see if we can.
Sent you a few emails.
I haven't even touched it.
Five minutes, just the basics of.
Okay. We got three hundred out of the five or six hundred, two of them are ground, so we're making it. Making it.
Um, the current substance use got back from her by King Core, they didn't stay, I don't know anymore.
Do you want me to take the mic down? Yeah, that'd be great.
No, that's actually, it's, it's a real thing.
I'm pretty sure the house should.
Yeah, yeah. Cause the, the one place that we went, they, you think, they're not legal.
Perfect.
You have to be able, cause they're.
I'll touch base with you soon.
Okay.
Bye, buddy. Have a good night.
Yeah, GG.
Anything specific we wanna go over, Joe, that you saw, or?
Yeah, so, um.
Should I wait?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Yeah, I forget. I'm used to just jumping in, so, yeah.
Yeah.
This, pretty much the same thing as this document that you sent out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that print is real small.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Sean, can you see that?
No, but I have it right in front of me, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is, this is the one that's just published out to us recently, right?
Can you grow that a bit?
I have it here. Eleven six twenty-four, was that the name of that file?
Yeah, so this is, um, there, there were some minor updates to it today, uh, that this is the big file, not just the police department file, so, um, I don't think we've made any changes. Uh, actually, I did, so.
Is this third quarter of this year or, or future?
No, this is future. This is twenty twenty-five budget.
Yeah.
So. And we just, uh.
So what we're gonna do is kinda change up the order D, since, uh, Mike was here, would do his, uh, budget review for twenty twenty-four, and then go into the non-public with him, and then come back with Joe to do the quarter three review.
So, Chief, um, I have, you keep, you keep considering yourself an officer. I have chief and then officer one, two, and three. So keep, keep that in mind, we look at this, it's, so. What I did was I enabled officers four and five.
Right.
Um, in here, and that was the only change I made, is say, wait, let's, let's put those back in the budget, and then that's our starting point. Follow that?
Uh, no, but we can go over it now, cause everybody's in the room. All right. So whoever would like to start?
So. Why don't I just do a, a real high level, and then if we've got a, if you've got a non-public later, um, I'll have you address some of the personnel suggestions you made. But that's not there.
Sure.
So for personnel, we took the, the current, uh, expenses for this year, uh, we, uh, we'll talk about some, some potential adjustments after, uh, and then we have the chief, and we have three officers, for a total of four officers right now today. And we have enabled in the pricing, the officers, the following two officers that are, that are missing today. So the, the plan right now would have those, those positions still open to fill.
And funded.
And funded, exactly, yeah, yeah. And I don't wanna talk about, uh, um, personnel stuff at this point, but we can go right into the, uh, expenses.
Okay.
So, Chief, you want me to walk through these, or?
Do you wanna start at, um, can, can we, can we hit real quick on the PT salaries? Or do you wanna go down below that to the lower?
I was thinking we go right down to the, oh, we could, we could talk about the, the over, the part-time and overtime, yep.
We can.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I just, it was just, uh, I think I put in that we might wanna increase it a little bit. We relied on our part-timers, uh, a little bit more this year. We obviously went over on the budget, uh, cause they're filling more shifts than they should, they would typically fill, um, while we're short-staffed. And I continued to, I see that trend continuing, um, into twenty-five.
Okay.
So for the twenty twenty-four budget, we get budgeted, uh, five thousand one hundred dollars roughly, and in twenty twenty-five, we're budgeting six thousand seven hundred.
Okay, all right, I got you.
And I don't know if this is something to think about, but, you know, uh, you may be able to.
Do you have that six thousand seven hundred on here? Or this, no, this is just for this year.
Um, so this is the twenty twenty-five budget, actually, that is the, uh.
This is twenty twenty-four.
This is the quarterly statement, so.
I tried to print that.
Um, this, we're talking, this is next.
Yes, and I couldn't print it.
Sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Would it, would it make any sense to, I, I find it highly unlikely that by the end of January twenty twenty-five, we're gonna have two new full-time officers. Would it make any sense to in, increase the part-time salary lines more and decrease the full-time salary by a little bit? You know what I'm saying? Cause I don't think there's a chance we're gonna fill both full-time positions January one. By the time I do a background on somebody, get them through the process and all that, you know, stuff. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying we wouldn't, but I think it's unlikely, um.
Yeah, it would make sense.
Bec- because if I hire.
If you don't anticipate it, I think it would make sense.
Cause right now, I can't send a new person to the academy till May, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Now, if I could have them working for me March and April and train them before they go into beginning of May, that'd be great. But I, I, I just don't see any, I don't see me hiring a new person before the end of January. Maybe it happens, but, um, certainly, uh, you know, moving funds around into the part-time to support that, so I have money to have part-timers more, more hours, part-time coverage, which is, seems like what, what's gonna happen in twenty-five, you know, maybe offset some of that cost.
So your bottom. So your bottom line would stay the same, you're just gonna move them to different lines.
Correct. Correct. Correct, yeah. I know last year, we didn't fund one position for the first six months.
Right, yeah.
And I don't know if that's a good call this year, cause we're, you know, we, last year, we were down three, right? We wanna have to move, fill three positions, but, um, I don't wanna bank on that, but I, I, I can bank on, you know, a month, right? Where it might be a savings on the full-time salary, but to help fund the part-time salaries.
So take out a month worth of one full-time pressing and put it, put that dollar amount into the part-time.
Right. Yeah, minus, minus any, um, retirement, cause we don't pay part-timers retirement.
Right.
So you'd save thirty-three point some percent there.
Yeah. Okay.
Just something to think about as we move forward through that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, cause we can fund that line without increasing the bottom line, like, like that, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I like that.
Yeah. Yeah, it makes sense, cause I just don't, I mean, unless I have two people landing in my lap simultaneously, which could possibly happen, but, uh, I still don't see them getting through the process by, by then, so.
So you'd have to work out them numbers still, then?
Yeah, I think Joe and I could do that pretty quick, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So it would be a quick revisit at some point, or just mail back, you know, give you guys a, an updated version of the budget.
But bottom line is staying pretty much the same.
Right. Pretty much. I, I think so. Yeah, once we get through today, we'll establish whatever that bottom line is, and, yeah.
All right.
Overtime, we, we good there, going down?
Well, we can, we're pretty much flat. Uh, we increased like two hundred twenty-seven bucks around that.
Yeah, I think we're good with that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Please prosecutor.
Uh, so I, I've been asking, and finally I got an email from the prosecutor today, um, it looks like there's, could be a overall five thousand dollar increase, but that's divided between all the members of the prosecutor group. So we could possibly see a thousand dollar increase. But it's all weighted based on a math equation of cases, caseload, so it's, it's impossible that we might get a decrease, even though there's an increase to the budget and the caseload.
Yeah.
So I wasn't able to get a solid number. I asked two weeks ago to set up a meeting and, um, one of the chiefs is, I believe, out on medical, uh, and that just didn't come together, so.
You wanna make that go from forty thousand to forty-one thousand right now?
I, I would, to be sure.
Done. Done. Police education stayed flat, six thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
Yeah, let me pull up my draft, but yeah, that's, I saw my notes are in my draft, but, uh, I believe it was, right?
Yep. Police uniform went from four thousand two hundred to five thousand, and the comment was likely to hire two new officers, ballistic vest or a thousand bucks each,
Plus the uniforms.
Plus the rest of the uniform and gear.
So these vests, they're, they don't, um, you're not able to reuse the ones that.
No, each one is a custom fit to the officer for proper fit, so we, they come in, we do measurements, you know, I think there's eight different measurements that are done. There's a five-year self-life, and they are not covered by manufacturer warranty.
I see.
Um, so most, like Benjamin Davy right now is, he's wearing two carpeters over, the vest. Barely fits him, and I have one on order for him.
Why don't you just use that as mine?
So, yeah, when they're new, we, and if there's one to use, um, just out of being real, sometimes you're like, I wonder if the person's gonna make it through the whole process.
Oh, yeah.
So before I spend that thousand dollars, if I have something that will make them get through the, the academy, then that's what I'll do. And then once they graduate the academy, I'm like, alright, they made it through that, they made it through the hiring process, let's get them measured and get them their custom-fit vest. Uh, and they're basically nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and change. And like I said, the five-year shelf, so, and I might also have an officer next year that's, at the end of five years, which I'm gonna have to order a third one, that's three thousand out of the budget right there, and I think that might be Jesse Heim next year, twenty twenty-five, so we might be looking at another, um, another, another, uh, ballistic vest. So, i- we, we definitely need to fund that to hopefully get everybody outfitting correctly and stay up to date.
And which line is that in?
Uniforms.
Uniforms.
Yeah. Uh, two ninety, in the last three.
So Bruce has had more conversations with the chief this year.
Yeah.
Um, so Bruce is gonna take over.
Uh, backing up on prosecutor, you, you said the new number was forty-one thousand that you just got?
Correct. Well, it's, the number wasn't solidified, it was just, I was told there was going to be likely a five thousand dollar increase to be absorbed amongst the members. So right now, there's four agencies, um, in that prosecution group.
So you think that brings us up to about forty-one?
Yeah, and then based upon the weighted average of caseload, population, um, we actually, we could see an increase, or we could see a decrease, depending on caseload. Our caseload's down a little bit due to not having the same amount of staff, so we might end up, it might be forty-one thousand, or it might be thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Right? Um, but I think we should look towards the higher number to fund that appropriately.
And you already did education, which is flat.
Um, yep, I believe it was, let me get to that one. I don't think I will quote the same order, but. There it is. Yeah, I, I put out, I reckon, going into twenty twenty-five, I recommend keeping the, the, uh, line item flat at sixty-five-ten. Um, it is unlikely that new hires will be attending outside training in twenty twenty-five, uh, cause they'll likely spend four months in the academy.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think funding that line flat is appropriate.
Yep, yep, you're not increasing it for new officers yet. Okay. Um, good. New hire expenses, forty-five, which is up a little bit, usually, um, it's just kind of as the costs adjust, um, for all those things, some of the things that, are in that, if I can find my.
Yeah, the, the big part of it's been the Indeed, um, and then background investigation costs, uh, psychological exams, my, uh, licensed ecologist, polygraph examinations possible, uh, and that could happen times two. Um, and then you can hire somebody and go through all that process, and they wash out, and then start all over. So you could get through all of that, um, so they could drop out of the academy, you name it, um, and you would be back to starting at square one again.
Yeah, so we're up fifteen hundred of that, which is, yeah, like you said, a lot of it is, uh, we're continually advertising for, for, uh, doing job postings, I should say.
Yeah.
Um. Equipment repairs. Oh, don't worry about that, okay, I'm gonna do sixty, okay. Okay? Good, so the total, eight nine nine, one eighty-six.
Plus a hundred and eighty.
I added that.
Oh, you did already?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh-oh, we would've almost been under eight nine nine.
So it was eight nine nine, and what was the last three?
Up one eighty-six. In that reflection of salary adjustments that we can talk about later as well.
Okay.
That number there, yeah.
Yeah. And then our, uh, twenty twenty-four budget total?
It was nine oh six.
Nine oh six.
Five ninety-two. That's what I see on this BSNA.
Yeah, so for twenty twenty-three, we're at about nine hundred and eleven thousand, twenty twenty-four, nine hundred and seven thousand, and then twenty twenty-five, we're looking at eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand. We keep trending.
In the right direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, which, I mean, the big driver is decreasing health insurance, that's really the one line item that's down, which I guess we'll see. Whatever, when you go, that's part of the salary thing, so, see if that holds true.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the most part, there was no, obviously, many of the line items was, was a bunch of increases for, no increases.
Yeah, outside of salary stuff, it's pretty close to flat when we drop those couple of lines. Actually, I can, I could calculate it. Yeah, we're up six hundred and sixty-four dollars outside of the salary buckets, so. Pretty much flat on discretionary stuff.
So that number you just gave, eight ninety-nine, one eighty-five?
Yep.
That's what these numbers as the salary lines.
Yep, the salary lines.
We're not sure what's happening with them yet.
Exactly.
Alright. Do you have any other questions on this budget? Lou?
No. Just.
Alright.
Would somebody please send me the, um, link to BSNA?
I, yeah, if you want, af- after the meeting or whatever, we, I'd go over it with you, although you don't use a tablet, you use a laptop, it's a different.
I have a tablet also, but, yeah, I just, I, all I should need is the link to get on there.
And there is, um, there is one that they sent you too.
Yeah.
I think you need that specific one.
Yeah.
Cause that has your actual username on it, so you just have to search it in your emails.
You need to use your name and password.
Uh, I have.
I'll show you how to search it.
It was web-based, right?
Took me a while.
Yeah, it's web-based.
Had to come up with the right.
It's not an app.
BSNA, yeah.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah, it's a little annoying.
Um.
Yep.
But once you're in.
One, was that email sent out?
It was a while ago, but I didn't give you, I have on my email history.
About a year ago.
On my email history, I have seven emails where I was attempting to log in, cause I kept doing stuff wrong.
Yeah, I remember.
So I can get it to you right after the meeting.
Okay.
Just remind me.
Cool.
Well, I guess I need my special code to get into the mic.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and you can reset your password if you don't remember what the original one was.
Alright, so before we go into non-public, is there any other, uh, public discussion to go on regarding the budget?
I was gonna say, did you wanna run through roundtable real quick, or no?
No, I think.
I guess the last one, I'm sorry to interrupt, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the.
Yeah, if there's anything, we'll try to hit that after, I guess, the non-public, I don't wanna get kinda cut, uh, tight on time right now.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and, uh, just a real quick, you know, ACO animal control budget, I, I, I basically recommend just leaving the whole thing flat.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
If you guys wanna look at it on your own, but that's whatever, so.
Alright.
Yeah, cause that's under you.
Yeah.
The ACO here, or is that a separate?
It's a separate budget, yeah, different line.
Separate. I see, okay.
Different.
It's BSNA.
Well, that's just a placeholder on this side, there's a separate sheet for ACO.
Do you? That's a question?
Yes.
Mike, until you said that, I didn't think about it, but there are some, uh, farm animal things that are coming up, would we ever be in a scenario that the police would be being asked to go out and monitor if somebody, if some farm turned up hot on some of these animal diseases that are coming up, or anything like that, or is there any training that we might wanna have to, to how to handle the, some of this stuff?
Yeah, I, I, I think we'd fall up, fall outside the scope of.
Or probably a state thing.
Yeah, state thing, or.
Okay, just checking, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, some type of disease control, or, you know, um, humane society investigators might get involved, so I, I don't, I don't, take anything, disease-wise, obviously escaped animals, we could tend to get caught for all that stuff.
Yeah, I was just thinking, more and more people are doing home animal husbandry, if you would.
Right.
And some of the, even just one farmer visiting another farmer is how a lot of this stuff spreads, so I was just figured it was worth a, a question, but I think the statement probably,
Yeah.
I hadn't thought about it.
Alright, uh, with that, uh, we're gonna go into non-public session, um, probably till about six fifty-five or so, so we can get back in here, um, and get prepared with, uh, continuation of the public hearing regarding Nimi Road. Also, we're gonna make a motion to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one eighty-three to A, is there a second? All in favor? Alright.
Should everyone sign in? Thank you.
Alright, thank you all for coming in, um, gonna reopen the public hearing, uh, regarding the, uh, reclassification of Nimi Road. Um, I think we'll start out, um, with any additional, uh, public comment, if anybody wishes to, to speak on this before we go into deliberation. Yes, sir?
I'd just like to say a couple of words.
And then if you could just, your name and.
Bill May, two one page of, uh, we, um, I've talked a lot about this since we last met, and I think this is one of the two ways, if you low-guess or low-noise, and I'd just like to look at both of those real quick. Um, I think I touched upon, uh, a whole life of its own, and I'd just like to start by saying, it was a young man that went to law school, graduated and got his, uh, passed his bar exam, went to work for his father's law firm. He was there six months, and he came in and told his father, he says, you're gonna really like this, I solved the Jones case, and the old man says, the Jones case, that's been paying our rent for the last five years, the point is, and not always, the point is, it's money that's gonna cost us, you know? Um, if you low-guess, and this goes forward, there's a potential for a hearing, a trial. Um, I know in a tale a lot, Mrs. Monavie would take the stand, of course, she'd be well rehearsed by her attorney, and I think, you know, he'd ask her name and the address, and he'd ask her her age, and she'd say eighty-eight, and go along with what's happened, and just before he turns the case over to the town's attorney, he'd say, and, oh, one other thing, what did you say your age was again, Mrs. Monavie? Eighty-eight, eighty-eight, thank you, and the reason he's gonna do that is either for a judge or a jury to implant that in their brain of her age, because elderly people, and I'm elderly, I'm eighty-three, are often victims just because of their age alone, but let's take it a little further, you know, everybody in here, would be called as witnesses, you're a highway road agent, you're Mr. Chairman, you're Mr. Son of Rowan, I'm Adam Administrator, would be called to testify, maybe even, I don't know what the attorney's plan would be, but maybe depositions before that, and there'd be questions he wouldn't answer in depositions, but he would ask you in, in, in the trial, um, and the other thing is, attorneys know the answers to these questions before they even ask them, that's, that's the sad part, and another thing he'd ask of his client, how much have you paid in taxes over sixty years? And he'd get that point across, two hundred and thirty thousand, whatever it might be, um, so that would take on a whole dimension by itself, and I'm not gonna get into the particulars, I'm not gonna throw questions that might be asked, but what can happen is, it could be found in favor of the town, in which case, the town would be out thirty, forty, fifty thousand, I don't know what the legal expense is gonna be, Mrs. Monavie would be out thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars in attorney's fees. In a sense, we both lose, cause we both lost a lot of money, but there's one winner here, and that would be a land developer, because if you develop a housing development, the first thing you gotta do is put on a road, dig up stumps, dig up boulders, put on a base, guess what? It's already in up there. Second thing you gotta do is bring in power, that's expensive, guess what? It's already in up there. So, the town would lose, this lady would lose, but guess what? There'd be a winner in a, in a developer, and believe me, I have nothing against home development, we've got thirty, thirty-five new homes up where we are, and there's nice people up there, we're good friends, so let's look at the other side, let's say you vote no tonight, and put this to rest. We leave here, the town is in for, I don't know, maybe a hundred dollars in newspaper rates, I don't know what they cost, Mrs. Monavie was in debt for maybe four or five hundred dollars in a retainer fee, and we all leave here, at least for myself, and I speak for my wife, we leave here with a good feeling about what we, what we've done, I thank you for letting me speak, and, uh, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments, uh, Mr. May, um, to your first example, um, with all potential legal and, uh, court aspects to this, um, in a lot of the decisions that we deliberate over, uh, at this table, uh, we can't operate out of fear, um, you know, we weigh things out a little bit different, um, and that's doing right, you know, by the community financially, um, certainly not looking to create any, um, burden such as that, um, but if it's a scenario that needs to be corrected, then. um, we have to be, you know, have the wherewithal to make those decisions. Um, and I do appreciate the second point that you had made as well. Uh, 'cause, you know, I weighed out some of those aspects myself, you know, uh before coming in this evening. Um, anybody else? Sir, I'll come, I'll come back to you, Ms. Monigue.
Uh Lou Shatell of Page Hill Road, I'm younger than Bill, so I'll talk a little bit quicker. So I'm sorry I late for this, for the hearing, but could I just ask the background on the reason that we're doing this? Is there a particular reason that we wanna change the road?
Um, well, it currently serves like that, the end that we're looking at, like changing the designation to, it's two homes. Um, you know, by, one owner, by definition, is a driveway, like if, I know it's not classified that way now, I do understand that.
One owner.
Um, and there's more than just this road in this scenario, um, in our community. So, um, it came up, it's been one of these roads that's been whispered about, um, within the town office or out in public. Um, when we're at different meetings, people say, oh, the longest um town maintained driveway, you know, or, so it's kinda, it's just with that spirit, so when this came up on our radar, you know, due to conservancy, but not because of that, um, it just got us chatting about that aspect and wanted to bring it to the community. Um, and get more feedback than what, just that one tone um that we hear a- as whispers, and what people, you know, chat about.
So there, if I understand, it's the whispering about it, it's a long driveway, is it really, 'cause it's just one president that lives there, is that kind of it?
No, that's a, that's a part of it.
That's part of it, okay.
Well, you can also look at the, the guidelines given, um, through court cases of what, if we were faced, supposing Nimi Road is a class six road right now, and there was a petition to turn it to a class five. And I think the court case, that was a case here in New Ipswich, Green Crow Development, the judge ruled and gave a list of five criteria to make that determination whether or not it would serve the public good to make it a class five road. Nimi Road would not follow, it would not carry any, any one of them criteria.
Fill us in a little more detail for that, please.
Well, I don't have my paperwork, I can dig it up. Give him a minute and he can continue what he's-
So, how long has that road been the way it is now? How long's it been there? I don't know, it's been here as long as I've been here.
Sixty some odd years, I believe.
Sixty plus.
Yeah.
Sixty plus, so-
Sixty plus.
So we have the whispers on one side saying that it's a long driveway and we're thinking about making a change, and we're talking that it's great a good for the community. If you consider the public safety aspect, so regardless of who lives there, or if no one lives here, the public safety, if the road's not maintained and someone's down there, there's a fire, there's someone cross-country scanned and people can't get there, is that worth the amount of money that we're spending here, plus the maintenance of that road? Which, I'll be honest with you, the road isn't really a great road, it's a rough road, you know? So is it worth it when we talk about community?
And that's what we're weighing out.
I would like to address that, um, as far as public safety goes, we all are responsible for the um public safety as soon as we get off of a main class five road. So, if an ambulance can't make it to my house, it's on me. And the same thing would apply. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, it would, would it be on you if the road wasn't plowed and the ambulance couldn't get there? It'd be on the town, at that point, right?
Right, but I'm saying if the road was turned to class six, then with that would come, um, you're responsible for maintaining it. The town would, would have zero liability on that and would not be responsible.
So what is the, do you have an idea how much it costs to maintain that road a year, roughly?
Approximately a thousand dollars.
A thousand dollars. We just spent that in attorney's fees. And then you put in, because I'm a stickler for public safety, you put that in there, it's not even worth talking about. A thousand dollars.
That, that was just a number that was picked.
What, well, I'm, I'm sorry, this-
By the road agent.
The road agent-
It was the road agent and it was just an estimation based on-
Well, let's just go, let's, let's multiply it by five, five thousand dollars, let's just get-
Supposing, yeah.
Okay, let's just stick out, and is that worth it to basically put someone and lock them in the road if they can't get out, if she's down there or someone's down here visiting, and it's snow and they can't get out 'cause the road's not been maintained? It's not worth it.
Yeah, well, to the basis point, it would be, the maintenance aspect would be on the community member, you know.
On the property.
Which is not unusual. We have several owners in town who live on class six roads that are responsible for the maintenance, and we do not hold any liability.
Well- But, I understand that, I appreciate that. So we've had a road that's been here for sixty years, and to my knowledge, there hasn't been any problems. And now for, for a thousand dollars or five thousand dollars, we wanna change it?
It's not just this one road, there's other roads as well that would fall under the same-
Sure, well, then maybe we oughta look at the broader picture and then factor in the public safety, because if it's such an insignificant amount of money, then maybe we owe it as, as the community to make sure that all our residents are safe.
But the state law would forbid maintaining driveways.
The what?
The state law. A town cannot maintain or plow anybody's-
Understood. But it's not a driveway, it's right now it's a road.
It is a road, yes.
Right, so why would, why would we wanna change that? And why would we wanna change any other roads for that, but if it's so, so much little money, we spend a lot more money in this town on a lot of things we probably shouldn't.
You can say that again.
Uh, I don't want to, alright, but, I mean, we're coming down to a safety matter. And I don't think you can put advice on safety. And where it is a road, we're not asking you to go backwards, we're saying just leave it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, and then just one, sir in the back?
Yep. Joe Trainor, three twenty-five Page Hill Road, I've got a petition here signed by thirty-two people, um, that live in the immediate area about uh protest, they, they don't want the, the road to be declassified.
Thank you. Ma'am? Did you want us to speak?
Um, well, I just wanted to say that I'm feeling that no good deed goes unpunished. That it was the town of New Ipswich that came originally to say they would very much like my land to be conservation land. And it was the head of your conservation committee who came to talk about that. And I think that's not been discussed here, and I had no idea there was a whole threat applied. And I'm, I'm deeply upset about it, and I just think you need to know that. I did something that was asked of me, which I thought was a benefit to the town, and I was happy at the time to do it. And now you're holding that as your excuse, and I really, I'm deeply upset about it. I do still have land on both sides of the road that could be developed, that could be sold, that will be my grandchildren's legacy. And I think to try to give young children the burden of maintaining a road, which is a much different expense for me to do than for you to do, obviously, it's just an unreasonable and unfair gesture, so I, I'd like it in the record that that's how I'm feeling about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Kevin Lowe, around three thirteen Page Hill Road. That petition is a signature of thirty-two local residents that are in favor of keeping the road the way it's always been maintained as a class five road. There isn't anyone, any of the neighbors, that want it changed into a class six road. It's a, it's a beautiful area for walking, they're generous in allowing people to use the property, um, for walking on the trails and, and on the roads. Other neighbors that own a property like, like that may not be willing to do that, um, but I think it's just the, the fact they've been there for sixty years and it's always been a class five road, now to, to reverse that, I don't think is the right thing for this town to be doing.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Yeah, Len Hayes on two eighty Page Hill Road. Building on the, the economic argument, I think changing the classification after a homeowner agreed to purchase a property based on a classification does subject the town to liability and to costs. RSA aside regarding classification, if the basis for that purchase decision and the price was because of a certain class and the cost associated with it, changing that has major implications that need to be considered, not just for this property, but for others too.
Yeah, and I agree. I agree that it, should the town ever vote to do something like this, it would be fair to have an abatement on the value of the property. How, that's my feeling, but I don't think that it happened with the other class six road residents. I could be wrong on that.
I don't think anything was reclassified, they were always classics.
They always were classics, yeah. Yeah, and in this case, absolutely. I don't underestimate the shock, and I apologize for any trauma that it may have put you through, but we are here as stewards for the town.
For which I felt the conservation, conservation was part of your desire.
Well-
Part of a steward to the town.
Well, it comes to us, um, and it's, when it comes to the board, we had to select and had to approve the conservation easement. I can't speak for these till I can tell you for myself, I'm a strong advocate of personal property rights. And if you want to do that with your property, I would never go against it. The easement itself, it's, I believe, the only thing you can do to a property that is in perpetuity. And that's a long time that this property is locked up. And I have to say, as much as, as much as we say, or I said even last time, if it doesn't really weigh in, when I think of that, it kind of does. That property is not to be touched. It's for what you believe to be a really good reason, and I understand your points of doing it.
I thought your conservation committee did too.
Yep, they do.
Alright.
Yeah, and it's appreciated for that aspect of it, but the other aspect, it's, it's not nothing. And to have a road serving, um, just that, it does bring some consideration to my mind, although the courts say future use of land doesn't weigh in to classifying of roads. I'm still looking for the five things, but if I could pause from the looking, I do wanna say, as much as this may, maybe feel like a waste of time for people, um, I hope you understand where we're coming from. And it is looking, all the taxpayers in town are paying. Is it fair? I don't know. Would this thing pass if it made it to ballot? That's a good question. There's a lot of emotions involved here. Mostly because you have made a very good impression on your neighbors. And I don't know if that's the entire weight of it, but it seems like it's a significant one. And when we're considering the whole town, um, we're not really given to that latitude. We have to look beyond the person who currently resides there.
So I've got, if I could, a couple of things, and I, I promise I won't be emotional. First thing is, how many names are on that petition? I didn't, I didn't hear, Joe.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. I would imagine thirty-two names, or if you put us all in the room, it'd be longer, louder than a whisper. Right? So thirty-two people have come before you to say that we don't support making that change, as opposed to a whisper, which is just-
So when I say whisper is, like snide comments, yeah, off the cuff, yeah?
Yeah, it's the same thing, it's, it's a baseless comment.
Something that nobody's been willing to look at in sixty some odd years.
Right, and then you look at, if it went to the taxes, a thousand dollars, I'll give it to you. You know, I mean, it's just not, it's not costing the town anything, if that what it is, even five thousand, it's not worth it. The, the other thing is, regardless of who's living there, it still comes down to public safety. And you mentioned that there's other roads, or there may be other roads that you're looking at. I would ask you to consider looking at a committee of people to make a decision on what's best for the town, and put the law book away, 'cause we all know the law can go either way. Sometimes it may work against us or not. But meet with the chief, the police chief, the fire chief, and talk about that in the road agent, and then talk to the neighbors and say, is it worth making this change that could actually jeopardize somebody, or put a financial burden on them to have to pay that because of where they live? So a, a little small committee wouldn't take a big thing. I don't imagine you have a ton of roads in town that would take a lot of time.
No, I can only think of two roads that are in this situation.
Okay, well, so maybe if we put the community first and safety first, then there won't be any, anything, it'll just be done. Thank you.
So here was the five points. Uh, this is from, I believe it's from Green Crow. Yeah. Cited in Green Crow versus New Ipswich. These are factors which may be considered in assessing the public interest. One is integration within an, an existing road system. Two is ease of existing traffic flow. Three is improvement to convenience of travel. Four is the facilitation of transportation for schoolchildren. And five is improved accessibility to business district and employment centers. Oh, there's actually more. Six, improved accessibility for fire, emergency, and police services. Seven, whether it would benefit a significant portion or just a small fraction of the town tax base. Eight, anticipated frequency of roo- road use. So these were the things that the court laid out as-
Mr. Sarmar, does that all refer to a new road?
Yes, and that's what I made clear.
Yeah.
If we were to be assessing whether this should be a class five road, these are the criteria that this court case cites.
I, I understand, I just don't think that should remain to this situation, 'cause the road exists, it's not subject to the criteria that you just cited. Well, all of these are related to improvements, enhancements. When you have something existing, none of those descriptors would apply.
But they would apply to ninety-nine percent of the class five roads in this town.
I understand, but-
These criteria would apply.
If you built a new one. I, I-
No, 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 the existing ones. Ninety-nine percent of them, we could go through and say, yep.
No, I understand that, but if the, the basis for the decision is to improve on six of those eight points, I believe, it's all related to enhancing what didn't exist, this is pre-existing, so I don't see how that applies. That's my comment.
Okay, yep, fair enough. If I could say one other comment?
Yes.
Um, we've had some, uh, let's say, issues in the past where neighbors have gotten together. And it really makes me happy to see neighbors getting together in support of one of theirs.
It certainly made me happy.
What's that?
It certainly made me happy, I didn't know I had-
Yeah, and, and as a more conservative, maybe a little bit far conservative, um, that you guys would take the time to come against the government, which I happen to be sitting on, it does do my heart good.
We're all neighbors.
What's that?
We're all neighbors.
Yeah.
All of us, it's a good town.
Yeah, and, so this kind of change is refreshing.
Well, 'cause at the end of the day, we represent the community, and that includes you all, and that was why we wanted to have this conversation. Um, just to see if this was a worthwhile endeavor to look at. I believe there's more than two, um, of roads that would be qualified for this, yeah. But, um, that's not been decided yet.
That's what I was gonna ask, is why aren't we talking about the other two roads all at the same time? Are you gonna do this three separate times with three different roads? 'Cause if it were all three roads at the same time, there'd be a lot more neighbors here.
I, I, I can imagine so.
We'd have to have it at the high school.
And, and there, there would probably be a lot more opposing voices as well. And, and there, there would probably be a lot more opposing voices as well.
So why, so why, why hadn't the other two roads been brought up?
Because we're talking about Nimi Road, and it's up to the board to decide whether or not they want to talk about all the roads in town or just one, and it happens to be Nimi Road, I think that's perfectly fine. I don't know, do you have a problem with it, or?
I just think it's.
An issue with it, or?
I'm just curious, because, like, what's the plan going forward with the other two?
We're trying to determine what the plan going forward is for this one.
This evening.
And this would be the longest. And as far, to my knowledge, it would be the, the most extreme case.
After the last meeting, you said you were ready to decide by this meeting.
Yes.
So, you know, we've all come together a second time. It's a lot to ask of people. And are you ready to make a decision?
I believe you are, but I felt it proper to allow some new faces that were in the room, um, the opportunity to speak. And if there was anything else, 'cause that anybody wanted to, you know, speak on, to give that opportunity. Instead of just coming into the room and not taking any additional comments.
So once he closes public comment, nobody can say anything?
And then we'll, we'll, uh, deliberate and make a decision.
And to remind everybody, this, we, we can't make a decision here. The only thing we can decide is whether or not to put it on the town warrant. We're, we don't have that authority to shut down this road, or. But another reason we extended it was you wanted to talk to, um, a few more people out and, uh.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I, yeah, personally, I'd only considered it a couple of different ways. Um, prior to hearing what everyone had to say at the previous meeting, so. I appreciate the extra time to, like, for consideration. Dee?
I think it may be a false assumption that the only options you have are yes or no. I also think you may have the ability to table this indefinitely and bring it to the road committee for additional recommendations. I just wanna make sure that people don't, I mean, if the board feels ready to act. But if there's a bigger question and you wanna take it beyond one instance, then I believe you could table it indefinitely. And it would have to be brought up again as an independent topic. I just wanna.
Even as a public hearing, you think that's true? We had to continue it.
No, I, I, table it indefinitely would be that you are setting it aside. And you aren't going to deal with this again in the foreseeable future. And it leaves you with the opportunity to then decide if you wanna do things at a grosser level, not at all. If you wanna get, uh, bring, potentially bring forward a, 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 a different type of warrant article. That might address something in this neighborhood. I just, I, I, I didn't mean to throw a spanner in the works. I'm, I'm just trying to be helpful that you may not have to make a yes or no decision.
Alright, sir.
I, I'm Mark Fernald. I'm a lawyer from Peterborough. Did the selectman get my letter that I sent a few weeks ago on this subject?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm curious if you've talked to town council about the liability issue. If you make a change from Class Five to Class Six on any road in town. The landowners can bring suit against the town for any decrease in the value of their property. It seems like that's the kind of can of worms no town wants to open. I live in Sharon, and we ran into that once there, uh, where there was talk about changing Swamp Road from its current status. And then they realized, oops, we're gonna get sued if we do, and we didn't. I actually think we might actually have voted, and then the next year, voted, before the suit could get filed. So I don't know if you've talked to town council, but it seems to me that's the big issue that you're facing is potential liability for the de- decrease in my client's property if the town goes this way.
So we haven't spoken to town council, um, in regards to this. We didn't feel that we needed to at this point. And like it's been brought up before, um, town council, depending on where we would like to go with things, that's where they put their efforts. So if we felt that it was worthwhile, then they'd put their efforts that way. 'Cause at the end of the day, you know, we pay the bills. So it's, anything can be argued one way or another, is what I've come to find as sitting on the board for the last five years. Four, five years, was that, um, a lot of these, uh, laws and rules and, uh, different ordinances. You know, once they start to get picked apart, it can be picked apart in both directions. Um, it can be really confusing, so that's why we kind of have to, for myself, you know, weigh it out. Whether or not it's worthwhile to go forward with, and then at that point, we would certainly, you know, speak with town council. Dee?
Yeah, I, one of the things, uh, speaking as a planning board member, that I do recall is that the taking or the giving of land and, and taking can be to make a Class Five road can come with, um, a, a negotiation regarding the, the change in value. So there, there is certainly a discussion to be had. The decision that you make doesn't mean that you're going to not enter into that discussion.
This is what I wanted to bring up, is has there been any thought of what it would be worth to you? To take over the maintenance of that road, and by worth, I mean, the other way. So how much do you feel the town would owe you? And I'm sure that you're, I don't know if you've discussed it with your attorney, he's already mentioned about how there's a price that comes with it. What do you think that is?
I have no idea at this moment, but I have several grandchildren who plan to own this property in perpetuity. I hope, or as long as they're around and can afford it. But, you know, they don't have incomes like that to pay for roads at the moment. So I didn't think it was needed. I thought they'd have separate properties there. You know, we have two houses. And they could sell more land. But I don't know if they wanna sell land in order to pay for the road. That's a dirty trick.
Yeah, and that's not what I was asking.
But it is a dirty trick.
But wait a minute.
It is a dirty trick on the town's side to do that.
Not if it was fairly compensated for.
Well, I don't think money is what I'm looking for.
And are you gonna compensate all the other roads that need to be, that wind up potentially in the same position as this? And what's that gonna cost?
We're not here to discuss the other roads. I don't believe it.
Why not?
Because we don't have any information on them at all.
I'll take a couple more comments and then look to move this forward, 'cause.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention, um, I think all of us in our lives have gone to bed with something on our mind. That we can't really fall asleep well, and maybe break up thinking about it. And that's what I think about when I think about this lady. She goes home and this is on her mind. If we prolong it till March, it's gonna be on her mind till March. So forget about the dollars. Let's look at the humanitarian part of this. It's a beautiful woman over here. You know, I just, I just don't like being here. I don't like being a part of this, and I'm glad I'm a part of it for her. But what we're doing, gentlemen, it's wrong. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And just, on that last note that it's wrong, we're not doing anything yet, but having a discussion, and I beg to differ. I believe it's right and correct to have the discussion, so, sir.
There were, was a question about, well, what could the damages be? And we could think about it in terms of money, or we could think about it in terms of family. But we have a statute on the books in New Hampshire that if you're on a Class Six road, you can't build unless the select board gives permission. And there are plenty of towns where they never give that permission. I, I, I understand that Ipswich has, in some cases, given that permission. But it means by making this change, you are taking away the ability of Kira or her children to decide to divide up this property, keep it in the family, but have different family members build houses. You're limiting her to the houses that she has by making this change, unless a future select board is willing to allow her to build as spelled out in the statute. And because you're taking away that ability. It also means that if someday the family decides to sell this property, they can't subdivide it again without permission of the select board. And that's gonna decrease the value of the property significantly, 'cause you know what a building lot is worth. And it could potentially, she's got an affrontage for four or five lots instead of the one that she has now. That's, it's a lot of dollars.
Thank you. Does anybody else that would wish to speak this evening? Uh, hearing none, I'm gonna close public comment at this time. And begin deliberation between the three of us. Uh, I don't know who would like to kinda start first, like where you're at, uh, this evening. You know, for myself, um, before, uh, hearing the comments from our last meeting. And then, you know, looking into, uh, the financial aspect a little bit more. And getting to understand, uh, what the implications would be, not necessary, not necessarily lawsuit-wise, but just that compensation aspect, uh, that we'd have to make. And also factoring in the negative, um, community impact, like feeling-wise. Uh, I don't find myself in a position, um, to push this forth onto the warrant, um, for this year.
My turn?
Yep.
Totally agree with you. I don't consider it to be put on a warrant at any time in the near future, or even far future. That, the, the road has two homes. At what point do you have to say that you have to have X number of homes in order to keep it as a road? There's nothing in the books that says that.
And for me, I think, uh, I like the idea of tabling it to leave the option open for future select boards. In the event that there's an owner who takes possession of the land. That perhaps is not as well-liked. There would be a, probably a different verdict, and I, I understand, I'm not trying to belittle emotion. I know it's an important part of our humanity. I do believe that this is very emotional, just as the gentleman pointed out. Look at the age in your scenario there, and I can relate to it. You know, and as a Christian, um, I'm commanded to take care of the widows and, uh, um, orphans. And so them kind of things bounce around as well. So I would go along with either not putting it on the warrant or tabling it. Just because of the emotional level, and I think this town has suffered enough emotional levels with other things.
It's nice to see community stand up for each other.
There's just that principle aspect, you know, that we had spoken about previously. Um, and sometimes correcting wrongs of the past, it doesn't, it doesn't weigh out. And when it doesn't weigh out monetarily, nor does it seem to weigh out, um, for that community health aspect. Then I think it would be best. And I don't believe that we need to even make any type of vote this evening. Uh, 'cause a no vote would signify that that's being tabled, and we're not looking to, um, bring it up. Like, can't give a timeline of, yeah, so.
So then how does she regain her sleep? And I meant it when I said I apologize that it's caused you this, but we're trying to be stewards of the town. That's the whole point of it. But how did they, yeah, how do we?
A motion to table this, uh, discussion, um.
Indefinitely.
For the time being, and.
Indefinitely just means you're not giving a specific date.
Okay.
It doesn't mean you're committing to say never again.
Indefinitely, so.
It's not like a conservation easement. It's not in perpetuity.
Alright, I'll take it. I'll table this indefinitely. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming in and having the conversation. With us, and I apologize for, you know, any, um, stress, undue stress that it has caused.
But in the meantime, if you're ever having conversations with people.
Thanks for coming in.
Try to come up with a number.
Do what?
Try to come up with a number. Maybe you come to us and say, if you give me ten grand.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
If you said, give me four, but no one.
Thank you for coming out, and I thank everyone. I know some of you are not happy to have to come out, but I believe like Sean said, it's important.
Does that mean my grandchildren have to worry?
Communities. Thank you.
No. Right now, I think everything is, you could ask for more, or something like that.
So it's my children that do the finesse that.
Well, this, it's a Class Five road, so you can subdivide. Right now, you don't have to worry. Yeah, yeah, for years, don't you?
I hope you all remember to call me if you change your mind.
Oh, yeah, we're sorry. People wouldn't have a choice. And by law, they have.
Don't you worry.
Thank you.
Yep, nope, that's.
I didn't hear you first, you know.
What was your name?
Sasha Moni.
Sasha, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
You know, I think the other, this is stepping back and hoping to not step on the feet. You know, for sixty-some years, it being a home that you have had any of us as kids. This is the man who knows how much it was paid in taxes.
This is what's really wonderful.
Two other civil factors of this town.
Thank you.
By Kara, thank you.
I can't. In my question against, so I appreciate what you guys have done this evening, but we have tried, we have tried to be stewards to this, more than just this property, but to this community.
I was hoping to put a microscope on this topic, um, to take it out from the depths of justice.
Good night, Kara. Have a good one.
You know, we appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Good night.
I think so.
You first?
That's, you're asking.
Don't have to ask the boss, I'm sorry.
Which boss is that? I'm not a boss.
Alright, yeah, so are you going to do the third quarter review?
Oh, you wanna do that?
Yeah, if, if you're.
Did you print those up on any chance?
I tried to, and it wouldn't print. I'm not sure what happened.
Next week?
Next week would be great, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, okay, we'll do third quarter review, uh, next week. The next review, Jen, that is filling up.
It will.
Alright. So under roundtable, did you have something to discuss there?
Yeah. So, uh, about a year ago, we started, it'll be two years ago, we started this, the Capes Capital Improvement Projects. And one of the things that I did is I pulled together a summary of what is a capital expense. And we all talked about it, I handed them out earlier, yeah, and.
You want me to shoot? You want me to shoot?
If you guys don't mind, we can chat in that front room if you want, that's no problem. Thank you.
I said I could have gone to.
I shook their hands. I just wanted to shake their hand. Oh, well, I'm your neighbor too. This is good that we're shaking hands.
And, and he's our liaison to the SVAS.
Who's that?
Right?
For the board of directors.
The Board of Directors on the ambulance.
Ambulance, yeah.
Yeah.
It's going good. One second, do you want reports for me every month? Just a memo?
I love that this is coming up. 'Cause I, I was hoping that you're gonna be back this evening, um, to see what you're willing to do. Um, to come in maybe every three months, or?
Whatever you want, I, you know.
If there's anything that comes up, like if you do take notes, or if they have minutes of their meetings, if you can forward it to us, or?
Somebody cut down a couple of trees for free.
You don't, you don't have to go over it now, but if we could, if you'd be willing to get into a regular cycle of
Yes, I will.
Updates, okay, and I'll reach out. Updates, okay, and I'll reach out.
Okay.
Yeah, and you can reach out to Debbie.
Yeah.
If you ever need to talk to us, just reach out to Debbie, she'll put you on our agenda.
Okay.
Or not even have, need, if you want to.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Capital expense.
Okay, yeah, so uh, um, you know, I prepared this summary of really what are capital expense items, and then we had a whole bunch of conversations about. Uh, DPW, maybe we should uh, raise that, that, you know, ten thousand dollars and, and. Um, you know, five thousand dollars was, was just a bogey, five thousand dollars is typical, so. Um, what, what industry does today, municipalities do today, uh, if it's a item which costs, individual item that costs more than five thousand dollars. And has a useful life of three years or more, is considered capital. If it's an operating expense, life, life of less than, you know, less than three years, then it's, it's gonna be part of the operating budget. So.
Actually, a lot of corporations consider laptops that they give their employees as, because it's over five hundred dollars. And it's a different type of item that they consider that capital equipment. And especially with the way it gets loaded with possible information that could be detrimental to the company. Or, or, you know, uh, containing um, secrets or designs or something that could get out of that. Uh, piece of equipment were sold.
That's really interesting, we don't do that, and I've never heard that before, but.
I, I've heard it, but only through an IT security perspective and your resource value, not necessarily your capital value. But the, the, the resource.
The value of the information that was in there is worth a lot.
Value of the information.
Yep, true. So, so we don't have a policy for the town on what is a capital item. Um, and, and the reason is this all came up, uh, Mindy put in a vacuum for pool of seventeen hundred dollars. And I said, that should be in the operating budget, and she said, nope, that's gonna go to the capital budget, it's gonna, gonna come out of the capital fund. And I said, no, 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 it can't come out of a capital fund, it's only seventeen hundred bucks and a vacuum may not even last three years, so it doesn't meet the crit, typical criteria. And then Debbie got involved, said, it's gonna come out of the capital fund. And, and the problem I have with a capital fund is it's not a reviewed fund. Meaning, uh, if you bu, build your budget, your operating budget, and you say, oh, I can't afford everything I want in my operating budget, oh, I'll tell you what, I'll slide this into the capital fund. Um, because, because there's money in that fund, and that's what I don't like about it. So I pushed back, Debbie get mad at me, she's still mad at me.
I'm not mad.
And, and what I, what I, what I just, I just wanna raise the attention, say, I think we need to make a decision. How do we wanna handle these items like the vacuum? Is it okay for this to come out of a capital expense fund? Um, or should we keep that in our operating budget? And that's, that's the issue at hand today, but we really have a bigger picture item as well, to make sure that we're not abusing our capital funds.
May I?
Well, if I could just all around pause, cause I think your initial introduction got circumvented. Over, so we're kinda skipping through things fast. So if we go back to um, this worksheet that you've drawn up and that, like these issues, I don't wanna miss out on understanding. Um, all the aspects of this.
Okay.
And then we'll get to that Debbie, we'll like get to that one pointed part after.
You have seen this worksheet before, this is not the first time you've seen this, and Joe and I sat here and said. We really feel we're gonna get into trouble if we don't have a definition for what is a capital expense. And, and we narrowed it down, the only thing I remember talking about was, is it five thousand or ten thousand dollars? And it was, that never got resolved, so I figured we'd be back here, I'm disappointed that we're back here at this level.
At what level?
At less than five thousand dollars, cause we were talking about raising it.
Oh, hold on Debbie, please, like I just, no, and that's where I wanna focus on this part, like I'm not so worried about. Like we didn't have that dialogue in a minute, it won't matter one way or another, it's just, cause even if we um. You know, wanted to raise it, then we could still discuss that item, right? So I just wanna get back to that, that aspect of what we're defining to be, monetarily, um, a capital.
Improvement.
Item.
Capital improvement, not capital reserve.
So, so you could say capital improvement, but it doesn't need to be an improvement, it could, it's a capital item.
And we had, this is, this is another discussion we had, is, is a difference between. Your reserve funds and just capital expenses.
And this is what we're talking about, I, I'm just gonna, just give me one minute. If you don't mind, because we're talking about apples and oranges. And, and, and they're lumping it together, the trustees of the trust funds are the ones who decide what can be spent. On any item out of the specific capital reserve account. So they're the ones who are stewards of that, so if you have something that you, um, the police had to buy a radio for a thousand dollars. And it, they have it in their po, police radio capital reserve fund. The trustees of the trust fund says, yes, this is an applicable thing, and then they reimburse the town, cause the town's already paid for it. You guys are talking about capital improvement plan, which are capital items over five thousand dollars, but those funds do contribute. To those capital reserves funds, but it's two separate. You're thinking, because this vacuum is eleven hundred dollars, it can't come out of the capital reserve fund, but it can. We've already talked of, the, Mindy's already talked to the trustees of the trust funds, and it is a qualified expense under the capital reserve. Okay, I'm done.
That was quick.
No, but it's, it's, it's getting.
Please, it's gonna get too convoluted.
So let's, let's go back to this for a second, and we'll watch, we'll watch a little bit of that, because, cause I think, I, I'm not arguing, I'm not saying that you're wrong. Um, because the trustee said, oh, that's okay, um, and the problem with that is because we don't have a definition today. So if you said, I want to buy printer paper out of this capital reserve fund, because we don't have a definition today, they say, huh, well, we don't really define what capital is, so I guess printer paper's gonna be capital.
Alright, so, so I, I think I understand a little bit of what the divide is.
Right.
Here, so there are, so those capital reserve accounts were created with their own, each one has their own definition of allowed expenses.
I believe they are just reserve funds though, I don't believe they are capital reserves.
They are called capital reserves, and they are also called expendable trusts. And according to Benty, the chairman of the trustees of the trust funds, those terms are interchangeable. When they say capital reserve fund, it, the capital part doesn't mean the same as capital improvement. They don't mean the same.
Totally agree.
Two sa, same word, different meanings. Tomato, tomato.
As a taxpayer, when I, when I vote to appropriate money to a capital fund. I expect that to be a capital purchase. Not a slush fund.
But what would you, how would you, how would you look at it then with building, maintenance, expendable trust?
Well, that's not a capital.
So that's not, that's not capital, that's all building, maintenance stuff.
You just said, Benty said expendable trust and capital reserve is the same thing.
They're interchangeable.
Legal definitions, so how would you look at it?
And then the, the pool, maintenance, capital reserve.
So, so if I could just pause right there?
Yes, sorry.
I agree with you. The vacuum shouldn't come out of that reserve fund, shouldn't be funded through that reserve fund, because it doesn't meet. This criteria for what should go into that reserve fund. The definition of that reserve fund may allow for it currently, but really isn't the spirit of why it was created. It's, it was created in order to plan for the future of things, you know, future remodeling, maintenance. Um, and things that were costly, not one thousand dollars at a time as it comes up, cause that's what our operating budget is for. So I understand and agree with um, a lot of elements of what you're speaking to, even though it's allowed. Going forward through this whole exercise and why we're doing what we're doing is for future planning and to separate out some of these things, so that we can realize. Um. She should be able to see, you know, a couple of years down the line, or know what the life cycle of that uh, pool vacuum is. Um, and if it doesn't hit these definitions, then it's not gonna go, it shouldn't be funded through the capital reserve accounts. Even though their current definitions would allow for it, we, it's really just a bigger dollar of planning. Uh, I always think of it as like the vehicles, um, I think there was a disagreement, like I feel like tires could be.
Tires is the example that we've used.
Yeah, it's, it's a hot subject, but very expensive.
Especially for the fire truck.
Gonna last more than so many years, so by the technical definition, would be um, um, applicable, but I believe that's been debated to some degree, whether or not. You know, tires should, could, or would.
I don't know if you could, in a time, but if you buy a Ford now, it might be capital.
Yeah, exactly.
So maybe the select board should discuss the use of capital reserve funds with the trustees of the trust funds, who are the custodians of those funds.
That is a very good idea. Something we've wanted to do a long time.
Yeah.
Getting, instead of capital.
Something, um, trust fund or capital reserve, I should just call it, it's a reserve fund.
It, it has to be called whatever the warrant article called it when it was set up.
And I'm actually thinking you guys.
It gets changed in, in the warrant article.
I'm actually thinking you guys might wanna do a warrant article that lays all of this stuff out. Like a corrective, a corrective warrant article to correct all the names of the funds once you have this discussion.
So, but, but, and that may or may not be needed.
Yeah.
But if you reframe and rethink how this whole thing could work, should work, is that. It's gonna be, only specific items are going to go into these reserve funds, and then we're gonna have timelines of funding for each one. And what the, the road work, like map to total funding for the different items is. And that's gonna be on the department heads, like in the creation and the asking. For it to go into the capital improvements plan, that's the point of the plan, is to see like what that roadmap is. So if it didn't qualify. You know, it, in theory, it's not gonna be in there, and the money won't be used towards that, because the trustees won't. Just approve just an off the cuff request anymore, they're gonna have the roadmap to what's being funded and why. And if somebody wants to change that, that's a bigger discussion and should go to vote. Um, because the community believes that they're funding all, like, you know, A through Z of different items for different departments, through the different capital improvement. Plan, plans that each department's gonna have. Um, and if that department pivots, there's gotta be a good reason why they need to pivot. Um. So like that seventeen hundred dollar expenditure won't even come up, because that five thousand dollars is actually being saved until or through next year for the purchase of.
A new sand filter, I mean, again, someday the filters will have to be updated.
A pool in there. Something, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, the recreation department gets a lot of money from donations and funding of events, et cetera, et cetera. That goes into a capital reserve fund.
No, it goes into a revolving account.
And what's a, what's in that revolving account?
The revolving account, that money's deposited through the treasurer into that account, and they can expend money out of that account. The capital reserve funds are, that money is deposited from. When, if the warrant article passes, the town writes the checkout, this checkout for three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to Fidelity Investments. With instructions to put X amount of dollars into each, whatever, whatever was raised and appropriated for each account. So they're totally different.
Okay, but that's, that money or the account is still handled by the trustees?
That, no. Revolving accounts, donations, et cetera, is handled by the treasurer, Carleen.
Okay.
Capital expense, uh, capital reserves and expendable trusts are monitored and dispersed by the trustees of the trust funds.
Okay.
So in theory, if the town decided to put forth a warrant article, or if the town decided that they wanted an indoor swimming pool for swim team. And they were going to, they put forward a plan, it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars, just roll with me on the numbers, and fifty thousand is coming from a donation. The other fifty could come from a capital improvement plan. The, the, how it's financed can be from multiple venues, a project can be, can be kinda like our, our fire trucks. The last time we got a fire truck, or one of the recent times we got a fire truck, it was a grant, so the truck cost X amount. The, a grant was subtracted and the town paid for it, so you can have a, a, a capital. Improvement for the town that is financed in multiple ways.
So then, so you know, like these uh, reserve or trust funds, or whatever you wanna call them, um, that's. Why my dialogue has been through these years, not approving increases above current funding levels, because we don't have the plan. Like why, like just, you're saying you need an extra thirty thousand, cause you feel like it's not enough. No, we need to actually have the plan to justify to our community why we're suggesting that this money goes into those accounts. And that's what that CIP is gonna be, and it's gonna contain items that are either five or ten thousand and above. And how long it's gonna take, or like what that replacement cycle is, and how long it's gonna take to save that money. Um, so say there's a ten year one and. We wanna save a hundred thousand dollars towards something, so ten thousand dollars a year, the community's gonna say, yes, like I approve of that, and I think that's why they're grouped together. Jason, remember we were talking about possibly pulling those apart?
Yeah.
But a lot of it, like that's supposed to be a capital improvements plan that has already been previously voted on. And can be justified through this, and in the working with the departments of identifying new capital expenditures. And things that we're gonna need maybe in five or ten years, that plan's always gonna kinda change and evolve. Uh, but the community's gonna be able to know, oh, this jumped, like that um, rec fund jumped by twenty thousand um, this year, why? Alright, well, in twenty twenty-five, we're implementing the first of five years of funding towards. The gazebo over the pool, or whatever it is, you know, like whatever it could be. And so then they can, you know, either say yes, no, maybe so on that, but that would have to be put to warrant individually first, in order to become a part of that. Overall uh, paragraph that you're looking at, like that whole grouping. Um, so that's why they all stay together, because in theory, they were voted on separately at some point. And that's just been lost in translation over the years, so this is just a correction of that whole thing and um. A way to be able to justify why we're saving money and for what. Debbie?
The um, the fire, fire department communication capital reserve fund was created in order to buy radios. Cause we just bought radios last year or the year before with ARPA funds. And now you're saying radios are not eligible for capitalization.
So when we bought them from ARPA funds, I think it was a whole package, right, kind of solution?
Correct.
Yeah, if you were to buy the individ, individual radio, I would say it's not a capital item.
So, and when that was voted as a warrant, like to be put into that capital improvements.
Yeah.
Uh, reserve of the plan, it was a whole total dollar amount, and was supposed to be funded over so many years, like whenever the replacement.
Because in ten years, those, those radios are, because we bought them all.
They're all the day at the same time.
Because we all, we bought them all at the same time.
But it might become not supported by the vendor or the state.
Right, right, so they, they say the ballpark average is a ten year lifespan, so we have ten years to save, and this, that, when we bought them, they were a hundred and forty thousand, so. They're gonna be a lot more than that ten years from now.
Correct, so in knowing those numbers and having those estimates.
So that's. Right.
We're gonna be able to plan adequately, right, that's the whole planning part of this whole thing, instead of just, hey, I need this, and then I can access it.
Right, no, and I, I totally get that. But if, but if one craps the bed and you don't have it in your budget, and you gotta buy a new one, that's what that's for.
But what happens?
It's made to buy a radio.
No, it's made to buy ten radios in the, in the whole system, but what happens, if, if you use that, you set pulling the money, that's supposed to replace the whole communication infrastructure. So if you buy, you know, three, four, five radios, ten years from now, we have to replace it, there won't be enough money there, cause we spent it replacing single radios. Those single radios that die off cycle should be bought through the, through your operating budget.
I guess the radios are a bad example, because we used. I guess the radios are a bad example, because we used, we bought them all together.
Yeah. But that's my concern, like I said, the pool and the vacuum, we, we have, we have, we have X amount of money for the, for the pool liner, it's gonna last ten years. But instead of that, we're gonna buy a vacuum every other year. And all of a sudden, ten years from now, we don't have the money to buy that pool, which is really the reason why we had the fund set up to start with.
Correct, so it's redefining and re, not even really defining, but just putting this back where it should be. Where it's true capital expenditures, like five or ten thousand and above and things that we have to play, plan for.
Then all the department heads need to know this because they don't know that. All the trustees of the trust funds need to be, to know that as well. Because they're approving things because they are approvable items out of each capital reserve.
And we don't have a current.
And.
Plan that we're going by.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so if this is gonna change the way it's always been, then. We need to let people know because, I mean, so am I supposed to not give you guys anything to sign?
Not today, now, but what's funded through, like, once this becomes. Solid and this is what we're working off of, it's gonna be very specific items that we're saving for, not just a savings.
No, I, I get that, I understand.
However. There's never gonna be something that says, you're not allowed, don't even go to the selectmen. Because if an emergency comes up and this needs to happen, it has to be able to be overridden with a vote.
Correct.
I'm not sure you'd override it to override the trust fund unless the town's reserves were in trouble. That's where you guys have the ability, I believe, to override things to tap into the reserve, right?
I'm not, I'm talking about overriding it, should we make a policy like Debbie just said? That policy needs to be able to be broken at when.
Well, it has been for umpteen years.
There isn't a policy.
Well, that, I.
You think there might have been?
Yeah, like in effect, I never quite understood it.
Where did this come from? I wrote it.
Joe gave it to us.
So it hasn't been in fact for years.
Well, no, those, those definitions.
But he's talking about years.
Sean thought there was something like this in effect, and I don't know if there ever was.
There may have been, um, but, but it was one of the things that, that I came across is that we have to have a better policy on that. I drafted this for discussion purposes.
And it was defined in the capital improvement plans, the prior ones, I know that they have had limited reading, but it has been in.
So as a part of our budget process, not necessarily this year, but next year, there should be a strong. Plan coming before us and all of those funds are gonna be funded for specific purposes and the dollars that are in there. Will be different than the dollars that are going in, like in that voting cycle and will be kept track of. Differently, like as a part of the plan, cause this is really what it's supposed to be, is this.
So, and for, for years and years and years, they either level funded. Or increased the funding on those capital reserve accounts with basically no backup or no plan. I'm, I'm gonna need something down the road, so add another ten grand to that, and that's how it was done. Since I've been here, except for last year and maybe the year before.
Not.
Which is where you're starting to take inflation into effect and into fact.
Well, even, no, last year, it was off the cuff at deliberative that it got increased because it seemed like it made sense by the people in the room.
Right.
And I get that, and that's kinda, not to go back into the road discussion, like road stuff, but that's what's aggravating about some of the. Uh, road designations or the, uh, the town taking out a road or not, is that even if a road isn't up to town standards, in theory. The community could say, hey, we wanna take that road over.
Right.
Um, by petition warrant and it'll pass, that's happened, so it's kind of, it's a tough thing to wait out.
Stuck with the, there's a reason the town, well, in, with this board anyway, there's a reason that road didn't. Wasn't accepted by the selectmen because it wasn't quite up to classified standards, but then the town voted on it. So now we're stuck with the instant repairs that inevitably happen.
Exactly, so it's the same thing, but, and that's where we change. Communicate like, that communication aspect, try to get more information out, um, during these key points. I don't know what, how that was spoken on at that point, because I wasn't in the room, um, but. We can't just do things just because they've always been done a certain way, and this is, like, I've been very frustrated by this for a long, like, four years.
I've heard you express your frustrations.
So, it, it, this is gonna be a great tool in order to communicate back to the people that we represent, that this is. We have a plan, you know, like, and there's a reason behind all the numbers that we put in front of them each year, uh, to vote on. And if they wanna know what that plan is, it's a packet, take a look at it, you know, like, this is what we're looking at, you know, and then. We go from there, you know, it's all in an effort to get more transparency, more better communication out to the community. Um, in regards to all the finances, like the financial aspect and impacts. And with this plan, I mean, it sounds shocking, but we'll be able to kind of roughly project out and let people know. What the impacts of what they're voting on is and where their tax rate may go in things, so that when you're in the polls and you're like. Oh, I feel like this would be a great idea and I feel like that'd be a great idea, it's the same thing, like Jason, the, the nickel, nickel, nickel adds up to two bucks. Scenario, you don't notice when you're checking those boxes off and then all of a sudden, there's buyer's remorse in November. Or, you know, like when the tax bills come out, because people don't understand what they voted on exactly. You know, because all those individual items that are on the warrant all get added onto our budget. In theory, like, it's because it's a whole number, not the budget, but we have to collect those dollars from them. So, you know, and that, then they come screaming at us, but they all voted and, you know, checked all the boxes. But, like, the, the rationale and reasoning wasn't there, so hopefully this will all lead to a more informed decision making come. March, like every March.
So do you want me to set up a meeting with you guys and the trustees? Or do you wanna table that till January or something, or what do you wanna do?
We get to pick the can down the road.
Well, I think once you see and we get to play with, we have not yet played with the capital improvement budget. And again, I think there are capital operating and capital improvement dialogue that we may wanna have. Um.
And it sounds like you guys are getting even a little bit deeper than my, like, crust level understanding of what this is or what it could be. Um, so it's encouraging to hear, you know, that the roots could go deeper.
Now.
Yeah, so.
Can I, you know, something I didn't put in the budget, and it may, it, it may not be relevant as we're looking for a new planning board engineer. But one of the hardest things I think about planning is getting the costing done. And people say, you know, it's not my world, I don't know the costing, and I think historically we leaned on people like our DPW to give us. Estimates, and I'm not sure that's fair either. I didn't put anything in the budget this year, I might consider doing it next year. But I think we may need to have a certain amount of hours that we bring our planning board engineer to help people with their plans to cost them. Cause otherwise, I think people don't know, what does it cost to put a gazebo in, what does it cost to flush out the, the soccer field? So they're ready to go eventually, that type of thing. So I, I think it's something we may wanna consider down the road, I'm, I'm not gonna change this year's budget. But it may be something that we need to see what our, what our engineers can help us with, because I think people struggle. Part of the deficit in the planning isn't that they don't know what they want, it's, how do you cost it? How do you cost a columbarium for the cemetery? I, I know he's talking about that right now, but. That's a great example of we don't know how much to, to cost it for.
How would an engineer, no, like, you're gonna have the engineer making phone calls?
No, they, they, they make, they have tables of what it costs to build things.
Yeah, cause they, cause they work on projects, like similar projects and it's better than just getting enough, like. Say you identify three professions that need to come in to build that, um, gazebo or whatever.
Right.
But then forgot about the other two aspects of it. The engineer, in theory, is not gonna forget about those other two, and you're gonna have a true total.
So it's only sp- pretty much specifically for buildings or building repair? It's not gonna be for other capital expenses like tires and fire trucks.
No, 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 I'm, I'm talking, again, infrastructure that would be built or. And, and again, if we did my imaginary indoor swim pool that I doubt anybody would ever think was serious, but. If we, we did that, you would actually probably put the starting part of that plan would be hiring an engineer to actually develop. That's not something you can decide, like, oh, let's just work on it on our own in the town, that probably wouldn't be wise.
Yep. Yeah, so, you know, we'll look to revisit this in January.
Okay.
Cause you're planning to be done by, with the budget by December, right?
Uh, well, I think the public hearing is January eleventh, something like that.
Something like that.
Don't quote me on that date, but it's right around there, it's like the.
I've already got it somewhere.
Second week of, yeah, yeah, um, so that's our, that's our deadline.
For this?
No, no, for the, uh, for the budget, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Don't scare me.
Yeah.
So the vacuum will keep in the operating budget, um, I wanna go back and look at the other accounts and just see, make sure that we're not using those accounts. As just, uh.
Yeah, so like that vacuum, like, is the current vacuum broken?
Doesn't work well.
Oh, doesn't work well?
It, it, it still works.
So through this budget process, she can't request that money to go into the capital, like, as a part of the capital reserve. Cause then she can't use it.
Right, no, there's, there's tons of money in there that nobody's ever used and, uh, every year money gets put in there for no reason. That it wa- it was just putting money in for pool maintenance.
Yeah.
So there, there wasn't a specific purpose, there wasn't a speci- like radios, like communication devices, like fire trucks, like police cruisers. That one was specifically for pool maintenance, so if the filter dies, there's money in there, if the, I mean, that whole thing needs to be resurfaced. There's no liner, it's, uh, well, concrete, but, like, that whole thing needs to be resurfaced, like, to me, that would be.
That would be a capital expense, yeah, if it had been planned for, for the last five or ten years.
But it wasn't.
Yeah.
Well, but I also think you guys just did a major expense renovation to the pool when it busted, didn't you?
No, we got a new filter from ARPA funds.
Oh, okay, okay.
So anyways, alright, so revisit capital plan in January.
Yeah, and then as far as the vacuum's concerned, if it's an allowable use at this point, I don't know what you guys' opinions are on it. I don't see an issue with that coming out of there, but I know that the original vacuum was purchased through a budget, like an operating budget. Um, so.
Yeah, I mean, if there's room in the budget, I mean, money left over, then why not use it in the budget and leave it?
There isn't any pool money left in the budget.
That's a reason where.
It's in the capital, it was in the capital reserve. I think Mindy's point was she was trying to keep the budget down. And because she already talked to Benty and that is a, an allowable expense out of that pool capital reserve. She was just trying to keep the budget down.
But that pool capital reserve fund should be used for repairing the pool, right?
It says pool maintenance, so when she, and that's, that's the thing, so. The trustees, they're going to court right now because they wouldn't approve something. Out of, out of a fund that the person who was trying to get the money thought it should be covered. So now they're going to court.
The person, you mean the school.
Okay, I was trying to be nice and not, not say things, so the school made a purchase, they said it should come out of the capital reserve. Trustees of the trust fund says absolutely not, that was not the purpose of this trust fund when it was set up, you can't, we're not gonna reimburse you.
So we're taking ourselves to court?
No, the school is taking us to court.
Taking the trustees to court, yeah.
Today, I, I've been trying to keep a running total, but I may have missed one, but we're, we're pushing, I don't know, three thousand maybe?
I think it's a little more than that.
So yes, taxpayer money paying for court stuff on both ends, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, cause either, cause we're paying for the school's court and we're paying for our court, lawyers, whatever.
So, so my feeling on that, that, that vacuum, if we know that we have an expense to, not in, replace the liner, but to fix the pool. We don't have enough money for that, we shouldn't be taking from the pool of money that was designated for that purpose and using buying a vacuum with it.
But it wasn't designated for that purpose, it was any pool maintenance. The trustees of the trust funds, uh, this, that's where I was going with that, are very specific on what this, what was the intent? Of the Warren article creating that capital reserve fund, if it doesn't meet that criteria, then you cannot. They've turned stuff down that we, we submitted.
Yeah.
Because they said, no, that's not gonna work, like the generators, we were gonna pay for it out of the ca- one of the ca- pay for one of them out of a capital reserve. And they said, no, because that's a new item, that's not, um, it's not what this was meant, this, this. Says maintenance, a new item is not maintenance, so they wouldn't let us do it, so then we took it out of ARPA, but.
They take their title very seriously.
Seriously.
They are trustees of that fund.
Correct, and, and they won't allow any expense that it wasn't intended for.
So instead of continuing to spend from that pool of money. I think we should put the vacuum in the operating budget where it belongs. And figure out what it's gonna take to get that money to the, ready so that we can spend it for maintaining the pool when it's necessary, that's my thought.
How much is this?
If we, if we know we don't have enough money in there today.
Twelve hundred dollars, seventeen hundred.
The whole thing is, it goes back to what Sean said, nobody set up a plan, so we're just all shooting in the dark.
Yep. That's where we need a plan, but I would stop spending money out of that account.
We haven't spent any, so, that money's just been accumulating for years and years and.
With that, like, so some of that money was supposed to fund the filter.
The filter's paid for now.
The filter's paid for now through other funds, um, so, like, in, just to go back to justification of this. Like the vacuum specifically, if, in this scenario, if the trustees of the trust funds, because there hasn't been a designated expense. That we know of that we're currently saving for and it is applicable and can be drawn from that. I believe that it, it should or could be drawn from, um, but then going forward, because you can always just draw a line. And say it stops now, and once this all becomes codified and, you know, put into, into place. And the rules are defined for everybody, then that'd be a fair point to do that, because there's no sense in collecting additional tax dollars. When we've already collected tax dollars for a maintenance item, because really, if we looked at it in a whole package. Had that, uh, vacuum not been purchased when it was and was on cycle, say, with the filter array. They could have approached that whole envelope of pipes and.
Right.
Scuffers and all of that with the, the filter, uh, replacement.
Yeah.
But we have been reactionary for a long time and not planning. So we're trying to move out of reacting and planning and becoming more deliberate with what we're gonna be doing. So that we don't have those, you're always gonna fire us, but out, but in theory, you'll have less, you know. You actually have the plans in place for everything.
Okay, so we're not replacing a liner because it's concrete, but we mentioned something else had to be done to it?
Yeah, the concrete needs to be, like, it, the pool needs to be resurfaced.
But we don't have enough money for that, we need to do it.
I don't know, I don't know what the quote is, I don't know if they've ever gotten a quote of how much it would cost to resurface the pool. And I, I don't remember off the top of my head how much money is in there.
I would think it, it is plausible from, I know costs have gone up since I was in pool maintenance by a long shot, but. I, I think it might be fairly plausible that it wouldn't be a huge amount more, um, so it may actually.
More than what?
More than whatever we have in the reserves.
How much is in reserve?
That's what I'm saying, I don't remember off the top of my head, I can look it up, but.
But this is a great example.
Look that up.
And those two things.
And get a quote to resurface the pool.
I probably have in Mindy's plan or whoever's plan, yeah, that it probably says we need to do this, but I don't have any costs. So if, if this is a great example of the two costs that we would need is, how much is in the reserve fund? How much is it, would it cost, at least an estimate, and then I can drop that in and boom, it's, it's up. We, we're not hypothesizing anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
So to sum up the night.
The whole night?
The whole night, we talked about taking away, um, a little old lady's road. Or driveway or whatever you wanna call it, and we're talking about.
Who was taking away a driveway? I don't know what land you were in, Lou, but anyways, go on.
And, but, but that's the way it was being viewed by everyone. And we're talking about a pool filter in November, just before the biggest snowstorm is gonna come along in two weeks.
Excuse me?
No, not really.
We're talking about the vacuum, not the filter.
Just tell it's over now, yeah.
Okay, whatever.
But for, to purchase, so we have it in the spring, doesn't mean we're gonna purchase it today.
I know that, I'm just summarizing.
You missed a good point, we got to commend some of our emergency services and, you know.
I know.
Can't be talking about good things.
Right.
This is a selectmen's meeting, what are you thinking, Sean?
Right. This is tough, though, I mean, we're trying to get all of our finances in a modernized, and it's, you know, having the
Yep.
future CIP that we're in year one of, having the, the FAC that is now, you guys have got a bunch of stuff, I mean, it's, it's gonna come, it's just, it's, it's a messy process, and we tried to, uh, we wanna un-messy it a little bit, but I think we, we made some gains today about where we wanna go in the future conceptually. I know you guys haven't done a foot down and said this is exactly when our definition's gonna be, and I think we're okay with that, knowing that by, hopefully by January, February, we'll go into next year better, stronger.
So, I understand the principle that you speak of, um, but.
Yeah. I can, I can take it out of the budget, no problem at all.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, cause the trustees are fine, then.
Yeah.
Until this is put into place and redefined.
Right.
Alright.
That was a long way around.
I think it needed, like, the discussion needed to be had because clearly, I've had discussions with all three of you individually and it's hit a little bit different and the same.
No, I agree, yeah, I agree. But none, but none of them matched up.
Well, yeah, cause it's, I don't know, we haven't had a group discussion to, yeah, cause
Perceptions.
There's a lot of yupping that goes on and understanding and filling in the blanks that you can do in, you know, individual conversations, and all those li- little gray areas come out in the group conversations. So, thankful that you guys wanted to talk this out this evening, and it's, uh, encouraging that this is gonna get a little bit closer to coming to fruition. So, again, thank you for all the time, work and thought going into it.
Totally, but surely.
Yep.
And I think it's gonna take us a while, I know I, um, gave Peter Somero some sample, um, long-term maintenance plan, but I think it may be, you know, it may not be this year, it may be next year that we have a, a really well-thought-out town maintenance plan for the buildings and, you know, it may just take him a little bit longer, he's, he's got between the equipment and the maintenance and the multiple buildings and, you know.
And transportation.
Yep.
Okay.
So do you have anything else on this, Jason or Lou?
Yeah, I do. Uh, Peter had, um, requested, um, the okay to get the, uh, snow pusher. Well, I have an update on that.
So we.
And it was actually right in line with this conversation, but I didn't wanna throw another thing into this.
Another wrench into it, yeah.
But it is, um, I think he said, he sent all of us an email on that, and then he said he believes that the cheapest snow pusher's gone, cause it was um, yeah.
Does he ever work on municipal?
I don't know, but anyways, I told him, I asked him where he's getting the money and he said, I'm thinking from the capital reserve account. And so I said, have you, have you put it through the trustees yet? And he said, no, and I said, okay, well, then I'm not gonna really bring it up.
Yeah, I just gotta talk to the trustees.
Cause that's what he wanted last winter.
Yep.
And, um, we didn't get it. So he's, if he had, I told him, if he put it through, put it to the trustees, but now, see, this is a whole different level that I've never really, but it's not in winter right now.
Same, me either, I've never.
But it's okay, you know, changes, change, whatever.
Yeah.
Well, he had two, he had two or three different sources, but there was a price difference between them.
Yeah.
And he was picking out the cheapest one at first, which sounded good, but I kinda remember we told, we asked him to pick one up in the off-season, cause that's where the questions were, I believe, the most.
That week.
And that didn't happen.
Yeah.
So anyways, I told him to just get it to them first and then we'll look it over it, in which case he has to.
Exactly, that funding part's important.
Yeah, in which case he can't just use them quotes, he's gonna have to generalize, you know, authorize up to, isn't that how the trustees work?
Hmm.
Yep.
So, um, yeah, that was one part of my roundtable, but Lou had the floor, so, I'll give the floor to Lou. I, I jump in there all the time, don't I?
Yeah, so often.
Alright, and then we'll, uh, leave the discussion, uh, whether it's five or ten thousand to be had in January as well.
Yep.
Alright. Okay, with that, Mr. Callahan, what brings you to us this evening?
I just had to stop by, so I thought I'd say hi.
Oh, how nice.
Hi.
Well, I think, uh, it's a good time to welcome him.
How's it going?
And thank him for stepping up to the job, yeah, since we're on TV here. Thank you for accepting it and, uh, filling in that hole.
Absolutely, yeah, thank you. Did you have anything that you wanted to speak on in regards to?
No, I actually, I picked up with Jason on a plan that he had left in the office for me to look at and we started talking about, never finished.
Yeah, I have it right here. I brought, showed it to these guys and they were like, oh.
That looks pretty complicated, yeah. Alright.
Yeah.
Cool, Joe, did you have anything else?
Nope, nothing here.
Dee?
I do, I, uh, I love you, but the last email I got was we were doing budgets tonight, and I recognize that things change and I didn't see exactly which departments, but, uh, I, uh, need to have a date certain for a meeting, and, cause right now I've got.
Budget review meeting, okay.
Yeah, budget review, either the nineteenth or December tenth. Cause, I mean, I can go a week later to the.
So you want planning board budget?
Well, at some point in time, you guys are gonna look at that budget, I don't think it'll take very long, but you're gonna wanna look at it, I'm gonna wanna be here.
Okay.
Okay.
So, uh, I.
So when are we doing the budget review?
The quarterly review next week, so would you be good to go over planning board?
Quarterly.
That's fine, I can do.
Preliminary budget.
Yeah, so nineteenth?
Fine, that works.
Then, uh, Debbie will work a timeout and then get it to you.
Yep. Yep, and everything else I can keep.
May I do it December?
No, November, next week, yeah.
Um, everything else will keep?
What's that?
Um. Everything else will keep?
Everything else will keep.
What does that mean?
So, I had another thought that might help.
Oh, the classics?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah, bring it, yeah.
Okay, okay, so, I think we are, kinda like we had the conversation about the, um, the, what's a capital expense tonight?
Yeah.
I think there's a future conversation about classics roads, um, and I think it would help for, for, uh, multiple, both maybe the road agent and the select board and the planning board and finance, if you wanna come in, or the road committee, to get together and have a real good understanding and maybe even get a little primer on classics roads, um, and or private roads and are they the same, um, and so that's something I, I thought I would throw out there. I thought we might find somebody like Carol Ogilvy, who's got lots of experience in this area, to kinda give us some pros and cons, like, things like if, if there's a class six road, the homeowners are responsible for the road costs, or, um, and, and road maintenance, and I, I may be messing this up. This is exactly why I wanted to bring this forward, is, uh, it says the homeowners note, not the property owners. So it's, it's, it, it, there's all kinds of nuances like that, that I think we, we probably wanna understand as a town, um, and so I thought maybe if you guys want, I would think about setting sync, something up the end of January, you talk with somebody like Carol Ogilvy to, to get a handle on some of this.
She is WRCP?
I'm sorry?
She Southwest planning?
Uh, I think she's consulting with them.
Oh, from MRI?
But I could just ask, ask them personally, I'm sorry?
I think she's MRI. I think she's MRI, or she used to work for MRI.
Um, yeah, I could certainly contact Southwest Regional, cause we're working with them on the master plan, so, um, but you guys just, I figured I would throw it out there to say, is it time that we all are, have the same page?
That sounds like a fun meeting.
Does it?
I can't tell, is this.
Well, no, it does.
It does, no, I agree.
Yeah. Then we can figure out what four wheelers driving on on the. At least we'll be using the same vocabulary.
Well, that's, I think it is, I think it would just help us all to make sure we're, we're singing from the same softbook.
Yeah, and in the meantime, everybody can take the free webinar on the NHMA website on classics roads.
Yeah.
I saw that.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Well, look at this.
I've only taken it four times, so.
So we're favorable, yeah.
Okay, cool.
I don't sign in, I can't open. Do we have, okay, get back, I'm trying to open this. Do you have a paper copy readily available? Yeah, I'd have to make an account with Outlook and, I can't stand Outlook.
You have it. You have Outlook.
Outlook is the most annoying, oh wait, I'm on TV.
Anyways, okay, so we're gonna invite the road committee, the road agent, the board of selectmen, and then the planning board and anyone else who wants to meet at the end of January to discuss classics roads.
Yeah, yeah, uh, uh, you got the road committee on there? I think that wouldn't hurt them to.
Okay. I did, yep, I got it.
End of January, that's gonna be right around deliberative session time, isn't it?
If we.
Yeah, it's a little early.
We're in this middle of, beginning, February fourth, I think, is deliberative. So.
Yeah, well, well, the dates, we didn't determine a date, yeah, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And January-ish.
Is there anything else you guys have that's urgent pending? Like, that we would need to do it sooner, cause otherwise I'd like to get to where we're all kind of breathing from the budget before we start the ramp up to, okay.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, I think it would.
January's a good time to ramp up that stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Dee. Do you have anything else that you're holding on to?
No, no.
Alright. Joe?
Nope, nothing here.
Alright. Um, so Debbie, did you wanna go through the rest of the?
Um, I don't know what I'm gonna put any into it, I just took things on there. Um, just a little, sorry, it's buried in here, um, oh yeah, so the messenic payment is going down from nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars per month down to eight hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and one dollars per month, beginning in January, so they operate on that fiscally in, off the calendar of the year, so, but they know we do it kinda.
Yeah, so is that, uh, so.
I'm not sure.
That's gonna be a fiscal year thing, for, on their fiscal year, so it's gonna go back up again sometime in the summertime?
It prob- possibly, possibly.
Okay.
So I, uh, when they increased, I think it was July that they increased it to the nine fifty-one, and then now it's going down.
So we can enter a hundred thousand dollars a month.
Um, effective, starting January, so that's going down, but that's all taken into account when they've set the tax rate.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
I suppose that's.
Um.
It's just, yeah, less that the community has to raise.
Okay, you know, maybe we can throw that money into some.
Yeah. It's not extra money, Lou.
Yeah, we don't have the money, or we're not gonna have the money.
It's not, it's not, no, because when they figured out the tax rate and they calculate the value of the homes, that's what they're basing it on.
How much?
That new amount, not, not the nine hundred and nineteen, so when we collect our tax money in December, that's not gonna be from, based on the nine fifty, it's gonna be based on the eight eighteen.
In eight eighteen, okay.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not free money.
No, I wasn't thinking it was free money, I was thinking that we could just invest it.
No, it's, it's not extra.
It's not extra.
Right.
But that does bring a good point, do we have a meeting scheduled for, for making money off our general fund?
No, so she had to have, she's having surgery, so she said sometime end of December, beginning of January.
Oh. She couldn't send a substitute in?
No.
We're losing money.
So, um, so speaking of tax rate, I guess I'll skip over the other stuff and move on to that, um, so the tax rate, the selectmen voted to use five hundred and seventy-four, five hundred and seventy-six, five, six, seven, five, seven, six, hundred thousand
Five, six, seven, yeah.
to reduce the tax rate, the preliminary tax rate that the state gave us was, um, fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents, and the new rate is fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents per thousand, um, the, the town portion of that is two dollars and
Eleven.
Uh, is it eleven?
Yeah.
It was two ninety, and then it went down sixty-something cents.
I thought it was two eleven.
Two twenty-four, I think it's two twenty-four, so the town portion went down to two twenty-four, um, because the selectmen used the unreserve, um, unreserved fund balance, um, the tax bills will be mailed out, um, no later than the fourteenth.
Yeah, they have to tomorrow.
Yeah, possibly tomorrow, but probably on the fourteenth, they're gonna be due on December sixteenth, um, the brownfield for the old highway garage in Paul Somero's property next door, uh, the, um, the phase two supplement, I guess you call it, was approved, so the brownfield will be s- paying for more, um, testing, more testing over there for the
Putting arsenic in the, um. PFAS.
Arsenic and PAS, PFAS, yeah.
Yeah, so.
That is all I have.
So, that's the little, you know, note on the, the tax rate and how we decided to apply five hundred sixty-seven plus thousand dollars um, to offset taxes was a part of planning, um, a few years ago, we instituted a policy, a fund balance policy, uh, where we would retain no more than ten percent of whatever that val- I don't know what the definition of the value is yet, but I know that the cash value that we have in the un- undesignated fund balance is at one point six million, um, even with utilizing that other, almost six hundred thousand dollars, um, to offset taxes. So we do have that emergency fund, if anything, um, should come up, and how we chose ten percent was it, was pretty much right in the middle of the state's suggested minimum and their maximum, um, that they had given us, I believe it's seventeen percent was the maximum.
I, fi- I think, I think five is the, the.
Yeah, also seventeen was the high and then the low was five, so we kinda settled in the middle, cause we didn't wanna pool up too much,
Yeah.
you know, community resources, um, without any purpose, and it seemed like, uh, one point six million dollars would get us through, um, in event, um, should we need to access that money, so. Alright, did you have anything for roundtable, Lou?
Not anymore.
Jason?
Yeah, Peter asked, um, about using the Sallyport in building number two, and I said, I, I need to look at the lease agreement and see if Warwick Mills is having that as part of their lease agreement, do you recall? I've been trying to dig it up.
They need to have access, I don't, I don't think it was part of the agreement, per se, but they put big stuff in and out, so I think they, because when we had the generators back there, they complained about them, that they were obstructing there.
That's okay, I mean, tenants complain sometimes.
Yeah. Oh, no, yeah.
Well, even when you say Sallyport, is that the one, it's on the end of the building, yeah.
I'm not talking about.
Oh.
I'm talking about the overhead door that faces the sand pile.
Oh. Oh.
Where they have air conditioner, or had air conditioner, yeah.
Some, they use it for some random storage, but he'd like to be able to start storing his plows and whatnot indoors, out of the weather all summer.
That's a great idea.
Hmm.
Mm-huh.
So we had, um.
Might even increase the longevity of it.
And I believe a trailer as well or something, um, anyways, I'm not sure.
We should look at it just to see what the definition, I believe we had set a square footage, but hadn't defined where, in the building?
Is that what we did?
Yeah, I don't think there.
So now what can we do?
So, yeah, they were supposed to reduce it, but they never did.
But then. And we haven't reviewed it, like to see.
No, and we haven't enforced it.
Right.
We brought it to their attention that you're using way more square footage, and then we did really nothing about it, except we raised their rent.
Mm-hmm. Nothing. Well, that was part of the agreement.
Mm-hmm.
It was part of the agreement, yeah.
So.
So that's due for review, uh, to take a look at and, uh, take a walk through the building.
Yeah.
Is there a deal coming up for, uh, for, for renewal? Yeah, it, it was supposed to be a stepped increase, and I remember what the last year was that we spelled out.
I think it was already there. Yeah.
Yeah. I think it was next, I think it was twenty-five, yeah.
And I tried to open it, but like I was muttering, I can't. I know that we were forced to limit them to, what is it, thousand square feet?
Well, they, yeah, they were gonna reduce it so that their, their bill was only X amount of dollars, and then we didn't follow up to make sure that
Right.
that reduction of use of space had happened, and even more so.
Had.
It hasn't.
Didn't, um, keep up with even the increase that was built into the agreement in the lease that we had.
But they did as soon as we.
No, we did.
Once.
As soon as you reminded them.
Reminded, that's what I'm saying, like, it wasn't, and then, yeah. Reminded, that's what I'm saying, like, it wasn't, and then, yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, they didn't automatically do it, yeah.
And so it should be looked at again. And not only did they pay that next month's rent, they backpaid.
Well, 'cause they had to.
Yeah.
It it was effective June, uh, either June first or July first and now it's like October.
Wow. And we haven't reminded them?
It's like, hello? No, no, no. They're they're paying it.
Oh.
But the first year
We should look at it again.
we didn't, we weren't paying attention.
Yeah.
But, so that was one thing that he would like permission to use parts of building to.
Uh, I don't think we can do the ask the right this evening until we actually define, um, what space
For. Not to see.
they're allowed to use and then with them, like to to, uh, refine that agreement.
Yeah. Yeah, and we'd have to, we would definitely have to notify the tenant if any changes of.
Yeah.
Mm. If we wanna use part of our building.
Well, any changes of what they're using now, I think we owe it to them to notify them.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so people.
Now, right, so you wanted to put that on.
Is Warwick Mills still using both floors?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's the building's full.
Yeah.
It's full.
Except for one little area. We have some building materials left over for when we were attempting to turn.
Yeah, 'cause I thought they were supposed to keep everything down the, uh, the lower floor.
No.
So we should probably do a walk through in a couple weeks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, the other one, he wasn't sure. I think, uh, the selectmen have to authorize selling any town property. And he has an old plow that's really made for pickup. A light duty plow that has almost never been used because they know it's gonna break. So they never used it. And he wants to do like they did with the cruiser now that we're coming into plow season. He had mentioned it this summer. Now that people are starting to think more about that, he'd like to have just a, um, silent auction.
Okay.
And he had to stay and he just goes into the general fund, but it's just sitting there.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we have to vote now or how, I don't know how all that worked with town property to sell it. We don't even know what the value would be. Do you remember how we did that with the cruiser?
We just put it out there with a sign on it.
So there's no, the selectmen didn't say anything?
No, in a sealed bid.
So we did notify, yeah.
In a sealed bid.
Can we throw that money into that snow pusher?
And you guys. Well, we can earmark it, I don't think.
Oh, we could think of it that way. I could, yeah, would offset that purchase to some degree.
You could think of it that way, but Joe won't really agree with you when he goes to do the
Yeah, yeah.
quarterly review. He'll be like, what's this?
And if it comes out of, um, a reserve account, like the capital reserve account, then like all the money raised from the sale of the plow would actually go to offset taxes directly, you know, 'cause it would go into that general fund pool.
That's it. And that's what I told them.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And the way I understood it, we just, we don't earmark them kinds of things.
Right.
Mm.
They just go in and they disappear.
So he's just gonna put it out, out there with the sign on it?
So he was wondering if the selectmen have to authorize him to sell off equipment. Do we?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Because we have to define the dates of when.
So what do you guys think?
Yeah, in like sealed bid, like the.
Yeah.
If you wanna do it that way, or we could just tell him, just put it in Craigslist, I mean, I don't know.
Well, I like the the sealed bid aspect.
Anytime.
All right.
Yeah, and people can just come in, drop off an envelope and then we read 'em and it's totally impartial, unbiased and
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, and I, when I.
right, in the public eye.
That isn't the one that was, um, he had out there last year. Remember we had a plow out there last year too? Is it's, is this the same plow?
I don't recall the plow being there, but he's shaking his head no. There was a plow.
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, that was off of the oh nine, if I remember correctly. That was very old.
Oh, okay.
So this one is right.
Specific, specific.
I can't remember if it ever sold or not.
Uh.
This one's a nine foot plow and.
That's a nine foot Fisher, if I remember correctly. The Jamaican.
That he's talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. So.
Yeah.
All right, so I told him to talk to Debbie and ask her about the old form that we used.
So, when do you wanna. When do you wanna.
I mean, the thing, or whatever you notified the public.
Oh, yeah, I think we just put it in the paper, we put it on the website, we put it on Facebook.
And just.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Sealed, we we put a sign on it.
We got a good response for that cruiser.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, yeah, put a sign out there for sale and
Mm-hmm.
Put it on your little.
open bids December ninth.
Two, three.
Well, good Thanksgiving on there too.
Four.
December sixteenth.
Oh, that's a Monday, the night, so the tenth?
Okay, seventeenth.
What do you think, tenth, seventeenth?
Basically give people like three weeks.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
You guess, you're you're right. Make it a month from now?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Yeah.
Open it's December tenth?
One month.
Yeah.
At five P M?
Yes, yeah, I do that.
And that'll be just a time or so, so it'll be anywhere.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Hopefully it'll tick off the first one.
Okay.
What's that?
I do one more thing.
Okay.
We are going to be.
You're not the only one. Seconds, just for seconds.
I know. I almost called her Jason.
And Jason and I are gonna put our heads together and figure out whether that was good or bad.
No, it's a fine thing.
Um.
Oh, no, it's, I believe you, you don't think you're getting.
It's not bad.
I believe we are going to have in short order two, um, securities or bonds that may come in. And so I would like
For roads?
for numerous things, but they will be like road bonds or infrastructure bonds, subdivision gravel pits, whatever they're gonna be. And so I'd like to know what the policy is on how those get held. I know that there is a process somewhere in this building. I'm not aware of it and I think that people are gonna wanna know, like, I I don't think that that's gonna sit in the Stevenage drawer somewhere, so it would be really good if, who's responsible, how often are they monitored, et cetera.
I believe it's the treasurer.
The treasurer is responsible.
Yeah.
They are never monitored.
Well, no, I I look, I guess my question is this, is do you as a select board have a tickler file for things that you have to do at like certain times of the year? Because it would be great if there was at least one date you pick that you happen to look at other contracts, that you look at these bonds to make sure they are not expiring or that something like that is going on. So I don't know what it is, but I I just, I think you have something and I don't know. I just wanna, maybe if it needs to be re-looked at and tweaked a bit, you guys might wanna do that and just get it.
So the interesting part of this is that the planning board, the treasurer, the select board, all elected officials of the town, right? And those bonds would be coming as a like from the planning board
Right.
to the treasurer, but then at the end of the day, the select board's responsible for
They're going off and entries, yeah. Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
the money, as, yeah, with the town.
Interesting, okay. I would've guessed that.
Yeah, so we have a small piece in it, but really I believe that burden would be on between the planning board and the treasurer um, to come up with that.
The amount, the amount, the amount is determined by the planning board engineer and then we agri- we agree to it with the applicant as part of the final, uh, the approval.
And I could be wrong.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
But then we hand off to, um, building and how how it goes from there, like they can't get their first building permit, no. They can't get their first C O now. The the law was changed in twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three. They can't get their first C O until their their security is in place. It doesn't have to be a bond. That's why you hear me use the word security. Um, and after that, then we could set other metrics. But it's like, let's say that the builder suddenly goes bankrupt. That's when it would matter is then we would come, it would probably come back to us somehow. I don't know how, because then it
I would think the treasurer, if the treasurer is responsible for keeping the funds, treasurer would know when they're expiring or whatever and and give you a heads up, say, hey, this is expiring in two months, like, what are you gonna do?
Well, right, and s- well, and some of them are actually annual or two year or three years. Some are just held in perpetuity until the.
Right, until the project is done and then
Right, so.
then they have to request to get it back.
Right, and it just doesn't occur to me, 'cause we ha- we hand it off, so unless somebody comes back and says un- unless it's gonna expire, and I would think again that that checking expiration dates
I.
would be logged somewhere when the security is logged into the building.
I, I mean.
If it's a passbook or a document, where are those kept? I I just don't know.
Yeah. And the treasurer's office.
Okay, the question is, well, no, I, it sounds, it sounds snarky, but
No, it is. It's not.
and but people have said, hey, I need my paperwork. Nobody knew who the paperwork was.
Right.
So I I just wanna make sure that again, before we have these come in, I give and you know, how how are we gonna handle this? Do we do another group session of handoffs and handshakes?
Maybe worthwhile, but we can, you know, definitely look at, you know, what aspect, you know, the select board's responsible for, um. It gets, it gets a little difficult when you get into other elected officials, uh, like the, you know, tax clerk. There's only so much input that we have with her and what, you know, she does. Um, it's really just her budget that this board has control over and that can be leveraged sometime, like
Right.
it has been, so.
I was thinking treasurer wise though is probably where some of the, the, are things going along and is it still, is the, is the documents still active?
Mm.
When it, how will we handle it when a builder goes bankrupt? I might have to think about that. I hadn't, you know, it hasn't, it hasn't happened in a while. It was happening quite a bit back in the early two thousands, not quite a bit, but it was happening enough to matter and I don't know how how we would put as something in place to monitor for that. It might be like if a home hasn't been built in X amount of time, we at least get a flag or s- I don't know, I might have to think. I I hadn't thought about that piece of it.
Yeah.
I was just thinking about, is the town protected? Who's monitoring that security?
And that'd be the treasurer.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
Look, promise not to.
No more, second is. All right. Um, I did have one thing for this evening, um. I is Cody assistant chief, that's a, the, uh, Cody Valancourt, the assistant chief, uh, last night
Mm.
um, in regards to, uh, fingerprints and background checks.
Mm.
And.
Is it Corey?
Cody?
Corey?
Corey checks.
Yeah. So what they, what they're looking to do, and you can interject at any time, Pete, if you have knowledge that's different, but they're looking to kinda utilize the national database aspect of the finger- fingerprint process and just do that, the fingerprinting, and that cost is roughly fifty dollars per uh, firefighter and they have to do that as a part of, uh, state law.
And then not do the reg- the criminal background check? Or would the fingerprinting part of it would turn up anything?
Correct.
So you wouldn't need to do both?
Locally, and from what I understand, that information came from whoever he spoke to at the state police.
Right.
They said you could go about it in this way.
Okay.
So the nuts and the bolts for this evening is that they don't have anything in their budget for background checks. They ever haven't ever had to have anything in their budget for background checks, um. And it says understanding that we don't have any money available for background checks, like in our.
Yeah, we're, we're over budget on that or right around at budget. We don't, we, they had two, oh, I think we had like a hundred and twenty dollars left or something. It's gonna cost a hundred and fifty for what he needed. Um, from what Mindy was, I I didn't really talk to him about it until today. Um, but we didn't have a lot of money left in our background check budget line. So, um, he asked me to add in a new number, a new account number under the fire department for next year.
So they, they will start budgeting for it.
So they can put background checks in there. I mean, obviously we ha- you have to do it, so we'll find it somewhere, but.
Okay, and that was his concern was making sure that it could be done, 'cause he doesn't wanna lose out on being able to onboard
Right.
you know, these, uh, firefighters.
Right.
Um, and the total cost that I had was two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two fifty?
Yeah, a- actually it's like two forty two something or.
Possibly. Yeah, I forget what, yeah.
So I just wanted to bring it to you guys and see, see if you're okay with us finding the money from another line in order to fund those, uh, background checks, so that they can.
So we're just gonna go over budget on the background check line and then, okay.
Mm-hmm.
And so it'll be run through the B O S.
Yes. This year.
It's always has been.
Yeah, yeah, and but then next
All background checks have.
Uh, next year each department will do it.
Shouldn't have that wrong.
Yeah, well, 'cause Parks and Rec pays for theirs through their revolving accounts because they pull that money in from registrations.
Revolve, we can. Yeah.
Mm.
So, yeah.
Fire department doesn't have that, so why would we
Some of them did that.
why would we have that on their budget?
Well, 'cause they, they should be thinking about that, because it's a part of their yearly costs or
Some.
Oh.
Right, operating expense.
It's their, yeah, it's their budget.
Um, not all parks and rec went in pool, went through revolving. So a lot of them came out of
The town?
the B O S.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. I mean, how many people have have we hired for D P W in the town office for ba- with background checks, maybe five or six? Total, all year, and.
I guess I never really picked up on the B O S having.
Yeah. It's, it's just for some reason, background checks has always been in the B O S budget.
Yeah.
And some of that stuff kinda makes sense.
But.
I mean, it is the town office, you know.
Well, it does because.
Right.
Well, right now we're in a scenario where another department like wasn't thinking about the whole cost and it's not a lot of dollars and we're probably spending way too much time talking about it, but at the end of the day
Right.
we don't know what's coming along or what the plan is for every department in every aspect, but
Right. Exactly.
it through their budgeting process, that's their jobs to create that.
Figure it out.
So if they're not ever thinking about it or saying, hey, add three for me in background checks, and then grabbing to pull in all these things and utilize our
Right, well, and that's the thing.
big pool of money um, where it really belongs in each department.
And it's not that big. It's a, I think it's like five hundred bucks, isn't it?
Frustrating, yeah.
It's it's not a lot of money.
May I have some input?
Yeah.
If we have the budget over in the, at the fire department, they're going to get the results.
They're supposed to.
And that's confidential information and it should be s- settled in by with all the other background checks that we do.
So police does their own. They keep all their results locked up in their personnel records over there.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
I believe fire does the same thing.
I I think it's, it should be protected information.
Well, it is. It's, I mean, the the fire chief at the bare minimum needs to know how their background check or their fingerprint check came out
Mm-hmm.
whether, so they know whether or not to hire them.
Are they going, are they going to have, yeah, and all they need to know, can you say yes or are they?
And then lock their personal, personal file.
Yeah, and but, um, I don't know. I I'm asking the question is, you know, because it is protected information that you can't have, I can't imagine it being located in three or four different spots.
So, I mean, like I said, I mean, we have a lot of the employees here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, D P W.
The work department has them.
D P W, Parks and Rec, we, I get all those background checks.
That's right.
D P W, Parks and Rec, um, any town office. I I never get the fire or police.
The police department has the right to, probably has the right to keep their own.
They do their own. Well, why wouldn't the fire department?
I don't know. I, that's why I'm not, so in this.
I mean, and and they ha- they are, so the background check, yeah, talk about for days.
But this part, this part we could like take a deeper look at another time, like to see if those should come through the town office
Yeah, they're watched. Yeah.
or not, um.
So Cody asked me to put in a new line item for next year. In the meantime, we'll just pay for the ones we've got.
So, and you have that information too?
I will.
Not yet, not yet, it was.
Uh. Okay. All right, 'cause even stuff like that should go directly to
Yeah.
finance, um, yeah, so don't feel bad to refer
Right. Mm-hmm.
them to whoever his liaison is. Is it you or, oh, Luke?
Luke. Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be an item for Luke.
Yeah.
Just to try to get people communicating where they should be communicating.
Yeah. If I do anything like that, I always copy the whole F A C.
Yeah.
No, no, I get it, but just trying to like get them in routine, 'cause really that discussion.
Knows, yeah. Are you saying refer Cody to them?
It. Yeah, yeah, 'cause he should, yeah, they should be speaking to their liaison in the F A C.
Or whoever. But then they gotta come to me to get.
Which will need to come to you anyway, but yeah.
At the, at the end of the day, if it's an approved expense, it's gonna go on to the budget proposal, right?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
So there's a, there's a whole way to do it. Um. I think that's all I had for this evening.
Yeah. I mean. Cool.
Good, Pete?
He wanted to talk about that.